I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, July 13th, 2020, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. Due to the health pandemic and extension of Governor Wells Executive Order 20-10 COVID-19 peacetime emergency, this meeting is being conducted via video conference in accordance with the Minnesota State Statute 13D.021. In addition, the school board has determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular location. The district did make accommodations for public comments, which I will outline when we get to that part of the agenda. Welcome, board members, and to those who are observing the meeting via our live stream broadcast. Procedurally, we will conduct the meeting using the same format as we have done for our previous teleconference board meetings. We will begin by taking board members attendance by roll call. Anita Ozzy will call the name of each board member in alphabetical order by last name. When your name is called, respond by saying "present." Roniak?
Present.
Gerwitz?
Present.
Hardy?
Present.
Iverson?
Present.
Pritchard?
Here.
Quinell?
Present.
Stratmon? Stratmon?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Also present at this video conference meetings, meeting is Dr. Hillman Superintendent Anita Ozzy, Dr. Hillman's Administrative Assistant, Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, and Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Services, will be joining us for a presentation. Board members are asked to mute their microphone when they are not speaking during the course of the meeting. When a motion and second is required, Dr. Hillman will initiate the unmute for all board members. At the start of each discussion as chair, I will call on each board member in alphabetical order by last name for any questions or comments. If you don't wish to speak, you are welcome to pass. I will conduct one round of questioning for board members. If members have a follow-up question or comment, consider using the raise hand feature in order to be recognized by the chair. All votes on items for individual actions will be conducted by roll call by Anita Ozzy. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded according to, and recorded, excuse me. Access to the recording will be posted to the district website as soon as possible. So with that, we'll move ahead. Dr. Hillman, there were a few personnel items in the table file.
Yes, we just had a couple of items in the table file today. There was an appointment and two leaves of absences.
Okay, thank you. We'll add those to the items, items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. We will do, we have a motion and a second. We will conduct a roll call vote to approve the agenda. Anita? Roniak?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon? Excellent, thank you.
Are you getting my voice?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. Agenda is approved. We'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, property and business owners, parents and employees, and students of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. This is a listening opportunity for the board and not the time to debate an issue. The Minnesota Government Data Privacy Act, Practice Acts prohibits comments about specific student matters, even without naming the student in open session. The board respects and values input on student matters, but if it relates to a specific student or a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5 o'clock today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment will be read by myself at this time. There was one public comment submitted for this board meeting, and there were, per the Policy 206, we did need to make a couple of edits to these requests or to the submission, but I will read that now. We had a submission by Jessie Fuller Rogers, a parent in the district. "Good morning. I would like to make a comment and request for further discussion with reference to social skills groups for district children during and post-COVID planning. Autism affects social communication. The isolation of the COVID era creates an even bigger hurdle for the children who have worked so hard to connect with others. This affects our community, our state, our country, and our world in a larger way, as if these children are not exercising their social muscles with as much attention as we give to their diet and everyday needs. They will not be able to function as fully as possible as adults. There are inexpensive options for social skills groups available to implement now, even online, to keep their social muscles from proverbially atrophying. I am writing this comment to request an open dialogue to determine what supports may be enacted during the next school year, whatever that may look like. Beyond that, what activities could be implemented to support social communication via inexpensive social skills groups online and/or after-school activities? Thank you." All right, so that was the only public comment, that submission that we had this evening, so we can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Chair, Pritchard, we have no announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to discussion and reports. Our first report, we welcome Director of Community Education Erin Bailey, who will provide an update about her division's summer programming during COVID-19. Welcome, Erin.
I'll take myself off mute first. Thank you. Thanks for having me here, board members, to share kind of what summer has looked like for the Community Education Department. I'll let Matt, I think Matt is going to share. Beautiful, thanks, Matt. So as we get started, things I wanted to highlight tonight is the programs that we are offering this summer through Community Education, the hurdles we have faced, and the things we have learned. I think part of what we have done in Community Education this summer will provide a good testing ground, and we've tested some things that will be likely provide good feedback as we enter the school year, depending on which model we would potentially return in the fall, that we have tested some things around health screening, tracking, and other things that will be important as we look to the fall to be able to kind of share that information with you tonight as well. So Matt, I'll let you, you can jump forward one more. So this first screen is just a list of the recreation programs that we have offered this summer. These are all being offered in person. The vast majority, basically all of these except for two, started this past Monday, July 6th. So we made the decision in late May to look at having programming starting in July. So the vast majority of both our recreation and enrichment programs did start last Monday, July 6th. And then in our enrichment programming, we, you will see a few more of those options. We're also offered virtually. The driver's education was all virtual. That we did start earlier in June with the classroom section. The state has allowed for the remainder of this summer that class, the driver's education classroom sessions will be offered virtually. And then when the stay-at-home order was lifted, we did move to offering behind-the-wheel, following all of the guidance, which includes wearing a mask and gloves while only the student and the behind-the-wheel instructor are in the car. We sanitize the car between each class, each driving session, and that is how we've proceeded with that, and that again started in May. And then, as I said, you will see that between the adult and youth enrichment classes, many are being offered in person, and if they were offered virtually, it says "virtual behind." All of these classes, both the recreation and the enrichment, are being offered following the CDC, the Department of Health, and the Department of Health guidelines. So if it's an indoor class, that means no more than 10 people to a pod or a classroom. So you, what, if that's nine kids and one instructor, or eight students and one instructor, it just, the indoor is nothing over nine. For aquatics, you will see we are actually only offering private lessons or household lessons. So if you are, have children that might be taking youth lessons and you're coming from the same household, you are allowed to be in the pool together as a household, and the instructor is currently teaching from the deck. And so if you are, you, again, if you're from the same household, you do have the option to get in the pool with the child if you would like to provide some assistance, but that is certainly a smaller ratio there. And then when programs are offered outdoors, we are again in pods and spreading out on football fields where we can, we can have more pods per football field, but again, following the guidance as is allowed. And then at the end of June, guidance also came out where we could start having adult softball leagues again. There again, the guidance only allows for 25 people on a field, so that would be with both teams. We can't go over that number. Any spectators that are come, we have designated areas. We do not use the bleachers simply to eliminate having to sanitize those in between people being there, so we are using beyond the first and third dugouts and in the outfield. And again, people are asked to stay by their household, within their households and social distance as well. Other programs that we have going on early, in early childhood, our ECFE, our Early Childhood Family Education, we moved that all to online this summer. As, as you all probably know or are aware, as you start to move younger in ages, social distancing becomes more of a challenge. It is not something young children understand very well. And so we, we made some choices in programming areas this summer. One to be that Early Childhood Family Education would have virtual camps. So those who are enrolled are picking up their packets of information activities, and then they meet via Zoom with the teachers each day of the camp, and then they are able to go work on the activities that were part of that camp. Early childhood screening, per the Minnesota Department of Education, has been on hold since mid to late March. We, so we do not, at this point, have screenings scheduled again until the end of August, where we would screen, we have about six children who will be entering kindergarten, six or seven that have not received a screening yet. They would be the first children that we currently have scheduled if we are able to come back and do that in person, starting closer to the start of the school year. We are in the process of finalizing the decision for bridges to kindergarten and transition home visits. The transition home visits we will make as we learn more about how, we, we learn about how we will return to school at the same time. Our childcare sites are Early Ventures Learning Center, that is at Longfellow, that serves birth to age five. That has been open since June 10th. We are currently serving about 30 kids there. That's about a third of what we would see during the school year. We always see a slight dip during the summer because we do serve some, a number of district, district staff's children who don't always choose to send in the summer. So we are serving about a third of the students we typically see there. And then KidVentures School Age Care is, has been open since the 15th of June. That is being held at Bridgewater Elementary, as you know. We, on Mondays and Fridays, have about 45 children there, and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have about 65 children there. That again, in a typical summer, we probably have 115 kids a day there. So again, we are tip, it's pretty in line where we have seen about a third to a half of children in our childcare sites since we entered this, the pandemic. Additional programs, we did start issuing, having facility use rentals begin also last Monday, July 6th. So we have just a few that are taking place. They are following all the district guidelines around COVID-19, and they also need to complete a plan that says how they will meet those guidelines. So we have put together a template that we give to those. And then they, with the guidelines, we have put in place for our facilities. They tell, inform us how that will work with whatever their programming is. Summer Plus and Summer Blast is virtual this year. We have about 100 children enrolled right now between two. As of the end of the first week, we had seen, I believe, 85 children one time. So at the end of last week, we were following up with, with any students who had not logged in at least one time. And then the Greenville Park Community School is also still running over the summer. Part of that grant requirement is that we would have seven weeks of programming throughout the summer. So that has always been tied to Plus and Blast in the summer. So the weeks that are happening with Plus and Blast will be the first, the programming, and then we are doing three weeks of a high level of activity bags. So think beyond markers, cramps, and really, we are working on putting together kits that have a level of activity for students to then use for the rest of the, for three weeks in August. We did have some programs that did not run this summer. Go back, just thank you, Matt. So reasons for, that we had that programs did not potentially run this summer, we had some instructors and agencies who we did with and have that simply just chose not to offer programs during COVID. Instructors were not either interested or for their own personal health reasons not to offer programs during COVID. Some of the agencies we've contracted with are either not in operation at this time or again, are choosing not to offer programming during COVID. Other reasons, we had some programs that were just, we were simply not able to meet the CDC, the Department of Health, or other guidance that were out there. So if it was impossible for us to follow the appropriate guidance, then we were obviously not offering that, that program. Some programs, we were not able to make financially solvent under the new guidelines that were in place. So obviously with reduced ratios between participants and staff person, it, it certainly makes us increase the cost to, to those who participate. And if that did not seem to be a way we could operationalize a program, then we made a choice not to do that. For some programs, it did mean we increased costs. For example, we did, in our School Age Childcare Program, we did increase the costs somewhat this year over last year in order to be able to be in, meet the guidance that was provided by the Minnesota Department of Health, and also be financially solvent in that program. And then some, which isn't in truth, were just due to low enrollment. So some of the hurdles that we have faced as we have moved forward with programming this summer. One, of course, is determining how to complete a health screening at each program site. We have this, which I think is, will be helpful as we enter the school year. We currently have health screenings happening in three different ways. If you are at a childcare site, you are, be participating in an onsite health screening, meaning that your temperature is checked, and you are verbally asked the health screening questions as you come in the door. So that would be at Early Ventures, Ventures and KidVentures. So a staff member or a nurse, depending on which location you are, takes your temperature, records it each day. And, and for at KidVentures, we actually, for either site, we do that for any person that walks in the door. For most of our recreation and enrichment programs, we are asking people to complete a home health screening. That means taking your temperature before you come to the program. And then as you reach the program, the staff is verbally asking you the question, "Did you take your temperature?" and also walking through the other list of symptoms for COVID-19. And they are also asking if any member in your household has had those symptoms in the last 72 hours. If you clear that health screening, obviously then you are admitted to the program. If not, we are asking you to go home and follow the guidance of the Minnesota Department of Health. For some of these programs, if you're a child that would come to that program on a bike or you're between ages of 16 and 18, and you might be driving to that program, and thus you do not have a parent dropping you off, we do have that form available for parents to sign and date, and then you have to bring that form to the program for us to verify that you, you a parent and you have completed a health screening each day. And then the other, third option of what, how we are completing the health screening, and this is happening at the skating school, because that program is held in the Northfield Ice Arena, and they do not allow anyone besides those that are in the program to come into the facility. We have a Google Doc that families are completing. So again, each day, they are completing the health screening at home. They have to log into the, the Google Doc for that day and submit it, and then staff are checking that Google Doc as people enter, that they, the child has completed their health screening before entering. The determination we made for whether you are going to be having a temperature check onsite or being able to complete that at home was, one, the length of time you are going to be spending in the program, determine that, and also the feasibility. When you talk about the number of recreation and enrichment programs, to be able to have that number of thermometers and people recording and, and the, the time it takes to go through, that was just not feasible. So, and for most of those programs, you are talking about less than two hours that people are together, and so that was how we, part of how we determined how a health screening would happen. Other hurdles is just the diligent recording of pods and attendance at all programs. As you are all aware, we had a positive COVID case in the childcare center in May, which provided us some great learning as we moved forward for this summer and programming about how, how important it is to record, which we had been doing in May as well, but to record who is in each pod, who is in attendance each day, and who, if any, is their potential mixing. So how this looks at our childcare sites is basically anytime, and we're kind of doing this in an old-school manner, but we have a notebook in every, every room, in the, every classroom, the computer lab, the gym, and as a pod moves in there, we record which space they are in at every moment of the day. So as they enter a new space, they are recorded in that pod, so we know where everybody's at at all times in the day. For our recreation and enrichment classes, again, they are recording who is in attendance, and the pods that they are in are the pods that they are in for the entire program. So if you are attending strength and conditioning, you are always in the same pod on the football field each time you would be in attendance. We also have stressed the importance of keeping diligent records about pods for all those that who are doing facility rentals, because I think one thing, if you aren't, if you don't know what they would ask for, if should you have a positive COVID test, that is the help we can provide you right now, is we, we know how this, what they're looking for when you do get that call. Monitoring social distancing at programs, I think, as we all know, social distancing, while it's becoming easier for adults and children, it's not something that I, I think is necessarily first nature for everyone. So we are monitoring social distancing at all programs. We have a warning system for participants where they get warned if they, twice, and on the third time, they will be asked to leave the program if they can't maintain social distancing. But we do have a, a monitoring of that at all programs by staff. We also have coordinators and myself checking in on programs just to make sure social distancing is, is being kept at all times. Monitoring exclusions, which is the time that participants or staff need to be away from programs. This is something I think we continue to learn more about each day. This has been most prevalent in our childcare settings, of course, at this point. Since the start of childcare, we have had somebody out of childcare each week on an exclusion. I will say they're not, that does not at this point mean a positive COVID test, but primarily means people who are showing a symptom, that is a symptom, there's also a symptom of COVID, and until we can rule out that you do not have COVID and you have an alternate diagnosis, you do need to be out of the site. I will say that we are seeing some increase in that as we continue to move forward. We have had more people out on exclusion this last week in the childcare site than we've had the first four weeks of programming. So this, I think, is the reality of what we will see is as people continue to move around a bit more and, or are together more in settings that we will be having to monitor exclusions. So we have created several different documents of how we track that, because that is something families need help in understanding how that looks for them and understanding what that means. There is a decision tree that the, the Department of Health has put out, but I think those who are working in programs every day are more familiar with it than families. And so it does take time to talk with families about what they need to do. Should they want to return to programs? Should they be needing to isolate for 14 days and things like that? Staying on top of guidance provided by the Minnesota Department of Health, the CDC, the Department of Human Services, et cetera. As you all know, that guidance has changed several times since March. And so every time that guidance changes, it does have an impact on some part of our programming. And so just making sure we're always keeping up with the most current guidance will continue to be a hurdle we face as we move forward. Accessing hand sanitizer and other needed materials for programs, that along with determining how to disinfect surfaces as they are used. It is, one, of course, we have, we have hand sanitizer, we have gallons of hand sanitizer at each one of our outdoor programs, and so as you come in, you get to, there's a pump, and you use hand sanitizer as you come into the program, but just needing, needing to secure that for all of our outdoor recreation programs. Most of our enrichment programs, if they are held inside, are using the pumps that are located inside of the building. We also, just because of the increased need to sanitize, have been working closely with Jim Colseth and his staff to determine what is feasible as far as his staff or the community education staff being able to disinfect surfaces in between use. As I mentioned before, balancing the program costs and the cost to fam, program, what that costs for families is continuing a hurdle. There is certainly an increase to our department to run programs just because of lower ratios, the need potentially for more staff to be able to sanitize, the need being in a typical setting in KidVentures in the summer. As people start to leave the program, we would start to combine classrooms and combine pods. That is not something we can do this summer. So again, these all have increased costs, which on, on some level, need to be passed along to program participants. And then accessing buildings, the district, we have kept district buildings locked this summer, and so we have had to work through systems about how to get, if programs or district facility renters are, are going to be in the, in a building, just working through how they will then access that building so that we do not need to unlock any of those spaces for any portion of the day. So the, the things we've learned, and I think that will also be helpful as we move into the school year, completing the health screenings, as I mentioned, does take time. We, as I mentioned, of course, we have tried these in three manners just to determine what is the best way to do these as we work it out for our community education programs, and then as we think forward to this upcoming school year. Monitoring exclusions also takes a lot of time. As I said, most people are just not familiar with the decision-making guidance tree from the Department of Health as they present a symptom of COVID that may be COVID, or it may be some other illness, but, and how, how we work through that and how we are able to get, guide them on what, how much time they potentially need to be out of sight. This takes time both for families, and it takes time for staff as well. We've also had a number of staff that have been out on exclusions from childcare sites, and just the level of documentation that needs to happen with this is also great. We've also learned that having forms and documents that can be easily completed are important. This, for example, in district facilities, we made a Google form that they can easily fill out. So they under, I think it's, rather than saying, "We need to have you tell us how you're going to meet our guidance," for them to specifically know the questions we are looking for them to answer has proven to be easier for them to understand as we are, as we are waiting for that information from them. Making sure there is a united approach and staff are on the same page is important. As we have moved through different, we have now, at our childcare sites, required masks at Bridgewater. Things like that have been important for people to be on the same page, just so that it has been easier when we've been united and presented a united front, but also given if they do have challenge, questions or challenges about that, of, of format, to do that before, before we put out the decision so that we have taken care of any hurdles that might be raised before we go forward and have people that might not be in, all in the same place we want to, we've wanted to answer those questions before they became a bigger deal. We also, things we have learned for, for Community Education, as you all know, we print a brochure three times a year. We printed one, obviously, for the winter-spring that by March was inaccurate, but just because of all the things that had changed. And so for this And so for this fall, we are printing a brochure that is about half the size of our typical brochure that contains a calendar of what we will be offering each month, but then is really directing people online to get the details of those. This allows us if we need to make any changes due to guidance, due to the nature of how school is in operation, we can make those changes with and people will still be able to see how programs are offered without a brochure that doesn't have the correct information. We are also offering almost every class possible dual options, meaning that they will be both offered in person and virtually. And then we will, of course, have information about our our new building as we will have not be having large groups of people in there this year. And then, of course, I think what we've all learned is flexibility, flexibility, flexibility. This is an ongoing and ever changing situation. And I can't commend the community education staff enough for how much flexibility they have exhibited since this began. In in March, we have made changes, we have set up systems, we've done them on very, very short notice. And we've learned a lot, and I think that will that will be exactly what happens for the rest of of this 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 calendar year and probably into the next. So with that, I will take any questions or comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Erin. So I will run through board members and you can ask Erin any questions or comments. I'll begin with Tom.
Yeah, thanks, Erin. It's just thinking it's like trying to go to the moon in a decade and figuring out all the all the things you have to. And so I was, you answered a lot of my questions. I had two two thoughts that came to mind. One is when all is all is said and done and things have calmed down, maybe a year or two from now is to gather all the thoughts and all the all the information that you went through to all the questions you had to ask and answer and somehow record that. So the next time this happens, will we just that much further ahead? So that's the comment. And then the question is for for rentals, who's responsible for cleaning after they're done?
Sure. So a little bit, Tom, depends on the rental. So right now we have the swim club is renting the swim club, the baseball association and the softball association are are three renters. So for baseball and softball, they're outside and they're not using the bleachers. So there's virtually nothing on our end. They are responsible for sanitizing their own equipment. So as far as the district, there's nothing on our end for us to sanitize. For the swim club, they have made the choice not to use the locker rooms simply because for their own, I think, ease of of flow and things like that. So that greatly reduces what we are needing to clean in that space too. If if they ever they have the ability to use the locker rooms if they want, if they do, we have us, we have a plan to to fog them, to use the machines that fog, so we would fog them after their morning session, then we are running our private lessons in there during the day in which our staff are wiping down door handles, like any high touch surfaces. And then we would fog the locker rooms again at the end of the day. And this stays, we are fogging if there's high touch areas on the pool deck after the large, the larger group of the swim club and then the community education staff is wiping it down during the day.
And all that's just part of the fee or is there an extra amount for that or is it just covered?
Yep. So we haven't charged an extra amount to to any rental group yet for additional cleaning. In in true, we we've always had the swim club as a as a facility use rental. They've always been a split kind of morning and afternoon. So we've had some some level of cleaning we've always had to do as as far as that that rental goes. Is it a little bit higher under COVID? Certainly. But we have not charged a higher facility use fee for that.
Great. Thank you.
Amy, questions or comments?
Yes, Erin, thank you for the presentation. It's really interesting to hear the hurdles that you ran into and some of the things you've learned. And it seems like you've been an excellent test case for us as we move forward into fall or whenever school starts again. So thank you for that and thank all your staff for being willing to be out there and, you know, exposing possibly themselves to COVID. So I really appreciate that they're willingness to be be there for us. And so I actually have two questions. At first is sort of about the staff and if you heard from them, you know, what their feelings are about being on the front line. And the second question is, how well are the virtual classes accepted? You know, are people signing up for them? Do you think they're doing the trick? What can you tell me about virtual version of classes?
Sure. So I'm going to cover yours. How are our staff feeling first and then I'll come to your virtual. So one thing I guess I didn't mention, we have required that staff wear masks at a programming since we started. The so if you're a facility user, you can make a choice about how you do that within within that program. But as far as community education program, staff are wearing masks unless they are outside and are able to be more, you know, more than six to 10 feet apart. So otherwise, we have had staff masks on. But we were acquired that from the start. We were certainly, we tried, Amy, to work with all staff. So if people were not comfortable, we did not, we don't, these positions as far as recreation and enrichment, you you applied to work this summer. So you, we explained to you coming in that this was what it was going to look like. And I think those who were not comfortable probably just didn't apply with us this year, to be to be totally honest. They didn't, they chose then that that would not probably be the best fit for them. In the childcare setting, you know, that we've probably, we had some staff that took kind of leaves of absence on the front end of it. So they potentially took those 12 weeks starting in March. And so then they started, we have some that are starting to come back. There's a risk here, right? There's no way to say there's not a risk in this sort of setting. I think we have tried as hard as we can to mitigate as many risks as we can, wearing masks. In the childcare settings, we have staff that clean bathrooms twice during the day. We clean down all the other surfaces that get used in computer labs. We work those down several times a day. We sit you every, each pod actually has their own set of computers. So I think for childcare staff, there, we've probably seen a few more concerns because this is their full time often benefit eligible job more than we have seen in those that chose to apply for summer employment. If that, does that help answer that part of the question? And then as far as our virtual classes, overall, I think they've done pretty well. I will say the feedback we've gotten is people like that there's an in person option. I think when you're coming off a stretch of distance learning and 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 there's not a lot running for the summer, when people felt like they could either attend in a small group or they could attend in person, there was certainly some that opted for that because that was different than what's been happening. With that being said, we reached our goals in plus and blast for attendance in a virtual option. And we've had success in a virtual in virtual options and enrichment. So I I also think that going to Tom's point and going forward, one of the things in the journal, I'll try to keep that right now, Tom is a bunch of yellow legal pads with a lot of scribbling all over them is that we will probably always offer a dual option. We will, going forward, we will not just say you have to show up in person on this day anymore. I think that's a great learning out of here that you could attend this class while you're on from wherever, if you so chose for ones that that is, if we could offer a dual modality, we will likely do that continuing to go forward.
Thank you. Rob, questions or comments?
Thanks, Erin. I guess my question is about, you you mentioned a little bit about enforcing the social distancing and you've talked a little bit about wearing masks. These just seem to be things that are very difficult because they're not things that we've grown up doing. So I'm just, could you talk a little bit more about how you enforce the use of masks? And if you've gotten any pushback or, and you know, I've noticed being in a group with just maybe like eight people for half an hour, we start out six feet apart and we start to drift together and so that must take up a lot of mental energy during the course of a class or a day. So could you talk a little bit about just the enforcement of these things?
Sure. And and Matt has heard has heard me say this, there there is no COVID guidance that is probably developmentally appropriate for anyone under the age of five. That that is not, and maybe slightly older, but these are, you are talking about social distancing is very hard. You're talking about in part of their development is the interaction among people, the touch of people, the re being able to, you know, read expressions and react to them. So what we have done in some of those younger settings, age settings, looks Rob slightly different than what we've done in the order older settings. We have not required masks at early ventures yet, although we will be looking to start that and we're going to try some some face shields and so that you can see that so you can see a teacher's reaction and that you can still have that piece and and also with the acknowledgement that there's going to be sometimes in an infant room that that is just if you're burping a child, if you're coddling a child and you that is just not feasible. So I think what we have learned, another learning in this is probably is where the Department of Human Services guidelines and the Department of Health guidance kind of conflict is that they don't want us to reduce any of our licensing capacity for childcare. They want people, understandably so, to be able to go to work. So they don't want us to reduce this, but they want us to be able to put in social distancing guidelines and those don't always marry so well because you're talking about, you know, numbers of kids that might be higher in a certain space than what they've been comfortable with. So what we have tried to do is really, and we've been fortunate enough, we have space. And this is one of the great things about going into the building that we are going into this fall is we are not going to set up some of the motor rooms, some of the conference rooms. We are going to turn those into spaces that can better social distance children. So that better social distancing children, knowing that sometimes they aren't so good at social distancing. But if we can limit the number of kids we have in that room, that automatically reduces the number of exposures we have for kids and for that staff member. So that way we can, we're going to try our best to keep trying to to split things out. Because for the example, the Department of Human Services would say in your toddler classroom, you can have two groups of 10, you just can't let them intermix. Well, if anyone's tried to work in a toddler classroom, if you think you can have one tent group of 10 in this corner and one group of 10 in the other corner and that they're never going to intermix, they I'm, I would question what toddler classroom you might have been in. And so I think when you ask about enforcing social distancing, we are trying in the age groups, it's harder to enforce. We're trying to do it by spreading them out. Which is, you know, I think that also brings a level of comfort for staff too, that we are trying to do our best to not put you in a room that has a large number of children in it. Does that help, Rob?
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Questions? Question or comment?
Yes, I had one question. Erin, thank you for this report and for all that you're doing. I'm wondering, looking into the fall, as you're balancing staffing, realizing there's additional work involved and wanting to have redundancy if there are people absent with being financially solvent.
Those are hard things to balance. So I I think the other thing that we've learned is you need a deeper staff pool to make this work because you are going to have people out on exclusions, right? And and that is going to be for any number of time and it's going to happen one day and you're going to need somebody there the next day to fill in for that person. And why that person is out there, obviously, they're being paid their sick leave or whatever, and you're paying for whoever is coming into staff that. So you're right, the bottom line is it's it's nearly, it's hard. It's really hard to make that work in a break even. I I do think when we come back this fall, I mean, Matt and I have not seen any guidance where we would not be able to charge for childcare again. So we would be looking at at having a fee based childcare program. Again, it might be slightly higher than what we are currently than what we had would charge in a normal year when when ratios and sanitation sanitation processes look different. But I I think that is a concern around staffing because you need a deeper pool. And we've we've managed to be okay in the summer because we do have some subs that we are pulling from district staff that don't work in the summer. That obviously changes when you roll into the school year. So we've been successful with that this year. But I I worry and I worry heavy about that in the childcare area right now because we will have people out on a regular basis. Because if, again, if you present any symptom that is one of those a COVID symptom, you are out until we rule that that is not that you don't have COVID. So you, it is on average, taking three to seven days for staff to find out results from that. So it, I don't have a great answer, Ellen, for how the bottom line looks, other than not very pretty.
Thank you. Jeff, questions or comments?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, thanks for your report. It sounds like you've got your new playbook written there and some new lingo and language, which is great. And sometimes you're just going to have to maybe call some audibles as you go along. But no, I I think, you know, getting into the next, because you've learned a lot from last, you know, the last quarter, and now you've got the summer and then rolling into the next semester, we know it's going to be different. So we just have to take for granted. And I I did like your discipline of, you know, warning, warning, and then, hey, you know, maybe it's a good time for you to leave if you can't. But you know, we have to do that in a kind way and also remember that, you know, as far as our community services, it's very important services that they have, these are publicly owned buildings and we want to accommodate people that want to use them and have those safer halls set up. So keep up the good work. I appreciate your report.
Thanks, Jeff. And I think it was to Rob's point, people have good intentions about social distancing. It's human nature to stand closer than you than is that is appropriate at this time.
Okay, thank you. I know Noel was experiencing some technical difficulties, so I'm not sure.
I've got him on the phone here, Julie, so I'm gonna, I have to allow him to talk in a different way. So I'm going to push the button now and you can call on him.
Noel, I know you've had some technical difficulties, but welcome back. We just finished the just wondered if you had any questions or comments for Erin Bailey on her community education presentation?
No, I'm I'm impressed with the, with all of the complex issues that you're dealing with. And I congratulate her what seems to be you're doing a great job to get the community back on stream. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay, yes, well, thank you, Erin. As I had mentioned to you, we were, we had the Community Education Advisory Council. And of course, they were extremely complimentary of the work that you and your staff has been have been doing. And I know you were, you're always quick to commend your staff, but you deserve full commendation as well for the hard work that you're doing. So it was great to have you here tonight. I think Amy really, really highlighted the best, you know, the one of the best aspects of running so many programs this summer is just really the true test case of how we're going to navigate our way come fall. So thank you. I'm glad you were here tonight, not only for this, but also to publicly tell you how much we appreciate all that you are doing. And I wanted to not let you go without asking if we have a Kaboom Playground update because I know that just it's still rolling. It's so exciting. You don't have to tell tell us a lot. But it's just incredible to think about this amazing play space we will have at the Community Education Center.
We, I do, at last Tuesday at 7:00 AM, I ordered a, we ordered a Kaboom Playground. So we, for those of you who maybe don't remember, the Kaboom Playground was awarded to the Northfield Community Education Center. It's just over a $300,000 playground we will be putting in. We had a hundred, feedback from a hundred staff and community members and a vote on three different playground options. And so I can send that out to the board if you would like to see it. So we have chose one of those. It will be a full pour and play surface. So if you're not familiar, it's a, it's a smooth rubberized surface that will be fully handicap accessible. There is a bank of 12 swings, a play area for six to 23 months, a play area for two to five years and two sandboxes for each of these areas. So it's unbelievably awesome and we are very, very fortunate to have received this grant. So it will be installed in mid-August. There will be a sign going up soon that it that allows anyone in the community and the There will be a sign going up soon that allows anyone in the community and the neighborhood to see what the playground will look like that it will be installed. So if you are in the neighborhood and want to check that out, there will be a sign going up soon, so you can see what the playground looks like. And like I said, it'll go up in mid-August.
I noticed, yes, Tom, you had another comment or question?
Yeah, real quick. Erin, if the staff gets too short, too low that you don't have enough for like the childcare, do you have protocols for closing for a day or two or three?
Yeah, so I think, Tom, what we are trying to determine still, which we haven't fully asked, is how many? So we know, we've seen in our early ventures childcare, about we saw very few children for the remainder of the school year, about 10 a day. And then we've seen about a third of our normal. So what we're trying, what we are working through right now is determining kind of how many do we anticipate will be back this fall? We've certainly had people register for this fall, but life has changed for so many people, employment-wise, comfort level-wise, all of those things. So we are in the process of serving them. So our first will be to determine, you know, where are we really at with staff and who's coming back? We will, we're going to certainly try to beef up our sub-list for this year. I think what also gets challenging in both kid ventures and early ventures is we can't just pull any person to work in there. They have to be complete the FBI background check and other certification process for licensed centers. So we can't just pull anybody and put them in those centers. That is against our licensing guidance. So it does get really tricky. We have been fortunate up to this point where we haven't had to do that. I think a lot of it would depend, Tom, on what this fall and winter look like.
Okay, thank you very much, Erin. We appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is a dyslexia update from Hope Langston, our Director of Instructional Services. Welcome, Hope.
Hi, everybody. My first virtual school board meeting. I actually want to thank you for giving me a little break from the COVID discussion and planning to talk about something completely different. So tonight, I come to you with some information about dyslexia in our schools. Matt, are you moving the, there we go. Okay, so these are just the items that we're going to cover in the presentation tonight. And we'll start, and I'm guessing, and I know actually the paper copy I gave you looks a little different, because as soon as I sent that to Anita, I was checking the National Center for Literacy Instruction, and they had updated the state map. But it actually illustrates, again, how quickly state legislation is moving in regard to dyslexia. So really, this nationwide trend began back in 2011 when a group of parents mobilized in New Jersey because their kids were having struggles with learning to read. And they formed this group called Decoding Dyslexia New Jersey. And they were trying to raise awareness about dyslexia and just about reading instruction in general. But what has happened since that time is you can see that that movement has spread across the country. So right now, there's Decoding Dyslexia chapters in all 50 states. It's even in Canada. Decoding Minnesota is quite an active group, especially in terms of impacting legislation. So we know, and you can see from the state maps in front of you, that in fact, as of last week, you know, we had just two states, and DC and Puerto Rico, who do not have any dyslexia legislation on their books. So this movement is strong, and I think it's necessary. And so this is kind of just how it has played out across the country. So in Minnesota, I've been watching the legislation evolve over the years. And, you know, what started out as every child's going to read by third grade, then became more and more stratified. And we then used the term dyslexia in the legislation. We have had the term convergence insufficiency disorder. That has actually been struck from the legislation this year. So as of, in the 2020 year, these are the legislative requirements in the state of Minnesota. And basically, what that legislation is saying is that we have to A) screen students, and B) we have to notify their parents. And we have to do that annually. And that, you know, we received a grace period, and we were sort of studying what was going on in the district, and how we were screening kids, and how we were notifying parents. And last year was really the time when we really were going to, you know, implement all of these legislative requirements, especially in regard to notifying parents. And we got halfway through the year with that, which I'll talk about later, and then COVID hit. So we have to screen everybody. We have to then notify their parents. And then we also have to provide alternate reading instruction, and that's a key point. They're saying that, you know, the legislation says that we have to provide something different to that child, a different type of reading instruction that they haven't been provided in the regular classroom. So in Minnesota, MDE has actually given guidance on what screeners we may use. And this is actually pretty critical for us, because we are a district that uses MAP testing, as you well know. And we've been using MAP testing for a long time. And we, as of August of last year, late August, MAP was removed from the list from MDE. So they were the fifth test, and now, as you can see on this slide, they are not. And in fact, the only test that can be given in a group format is the STAR test. And so AmesWeb and DIBELS are quite similar. We know DIBELS, we've given DIBELS. And that's a one-on-one test, K through five. FastBridge, you also may recall from our experience in the kindergarten entry pilot. And so we did use it in kindergarten for three years. And STAR test, we were actually looking at this year, Brent Rowke and Rose Turner-Clyff were doing a pilot of STAR at the middle school with their kids. Bridgewater has used the STAR with their accelerated reader program. But MAP is not there, and MAP is not there because it does not include a measure of oral reading fluency. Now, Lakeville is actually purchasing the extra test from MAP, and it's called MAP Fluency. It's, again, a separate test that you have to buy. It requires headsets with microphones, and it can be given in a group format. But it is quite expensive, both in terms of the additional test cost and the equipment that you need to administer the test. So I've been working, actually had a great conversation with Dr. Amy Schulting, who is the state dyslexia specialist a couple of weeks ago. Vicky Weinberg, I am happy to have a relationship with her. She's brilliant. And she has been the person that's been leading the Tier One Fidelity Grant that Mary Hansen had worked with over the past three years. So they have been a tremendous help to me, just sort of navigating what the screening process might look like, especially given the distance learning potential. So I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. So this is Minnesota's definition of dyslexia. And I just put it there because you may get asked, there are many definitions of dyslexia. And for Minnesota, this is the one that we use, and this is the one that we put into practice. So it's a phonological deficit, it's neurological in origin. And so you may see other definitions. But again, I think it's good to be aware that this is the one that our state legislature adopted. All right. So last year, we knew that we were going to have to report on the number of students that were screened for dyslexic tendencies. And we wanted to be sure that we were in compliance with all aspects of the state legislation. So one of the things that we know is an indicator of potential reading struggle is having a family history of reading struggle. And so with that in mind, we worked with different districts in the Minnesota Assessment Group. And it's a very collaborative group, and we're all kind of addressing the same issue. And everybody shares and collaborates. And so we used a five-question survey that included, does your child show a lack of interest in reading or talking and looking at books? Do you have a family member that struggled with learning to read? Was your child recommended to repeat in elementary grade or complete an additional year of preschool? Has your child attended summer school or received private tutoring for reading? Or have you been told for your student in grade one through five that your child is struggling in reading? And so we actually now have this survey as part of the enrollment packets. And we managed to get almost 86% of parents to respond via ready, set, go, in-person conferences, follow-up by the teachers. It was a pretty impressive retrieval effort for all K-5 students. And what that gave us is really some great information about our kids in terms of their family's perspective on their reading. And from that initial survey, so that was in the fall of last year, we went into November trying to get every last family response. We had 25% of our families reporting a family history of reading difficulty. And that was for that one question. We had 59% of our families who had no dyslexic risk factors at all. So they answered no to all of those questions. And then we could match that data with the fall MAP data. And interestingly enough, of those families that reported no dyslexic risk factors, 82% of those kids scored at or above grade level on the fall reading test. And an additional 8% were just below the grade level benchmark. So we knew that, okay, our survey is pretty solid. It matched up with what actual reading data we had to start the year last year, and we were encouraged by that. Interestingly, we did see that 15% of our kids, parents reported a lack of interest in reading. And of those kids, 62% of them are boys. So that's something that we put out in several different places, in Northfield, and then the literacy groups at each of the schools, just sort of looking at that data and trying to think of ways and they could respond to it, and action plans that they can put in place. So this slide, though, then went into the winter. And what was important to that, to that time period, was we had, well, actually, so let me read back up for a sec. So the K-1, 2, and 3 bullets are the fall MAP tests and the family history connection. So you can see that 8, 11%, that's awesome, you know, we would think that that's fairly low. And then you see this jump up to 20%. And what happens in second grade in Northfield is that the students move from that K-1 MAP for primary grade tests, which is very, has heavy auditory support, and is colorful and kind of gamey, into the 2-5 test, which is heavy on text, low on auditory support. And our kids tend to, if you're on the bubble or you don't have great reading stamina, you tend to struggle more with that test. These lower numbers, though, at the K-1 levels do indicate why MAP may have been removed from the MDE list of approved screeners, though, because what we're finding with our K-1 kids, if they have great auditory comprehension, they can actually look pretty good on a MAP. But they have some phonological deficits that don't necessarily show up on the MAP at that level. So that was something that, again, it was a great year to be able to match that survey data with actual MAP data and then teacher data from the classroom. But those are what our numbers looked like for kids who were scoring below grade level and had a family history of reading challenge. So the last snowflake bullet was when we went into the winter MAP, which again was optional for our grade, except for grade three. Teachers, because we're trying to reduce testing times, the winter window is a window that is generally optional. And so what we saw there was a match of students who reported a family history and then who had a low fall and winter MAP test were given letters indicating that their child was not reading at grade level. And part of that letter distribution involved the review of our own internal communication that we had been using. And internal, I mean, programs that we were currently running, how did we notify parents? And we realized in looking at the Reading Core letter, the AdSIS letters, and the Title letters, that in fact, it may be hard for a parent to interpret what that letter was meaning for them in terms of their child's reading achievement. And so we knew that we had to be very clear on this. And in fact, it was very clear that, you know, we said, basically, your child, and here are the scores, your child is currently not reading at grade level, and here's things you can do, and here's what your child is getting for reading services. So it was a pretty straightforward, to-the-point letter about reading performance. And then if a child didn't take the winter MAP, we had the teacher look at all those names, and we used classroom performance and the fall MAP, and then the family history. So those additional 29 kids also received letters. The plan was that we were going to, again, in the spring, relook at all the test data for K-5 students and issue letters to anyone who did not perform at grade level on the test or, and in conjunction with their teacher classroom performance information. So we never wanted to use one data point to tell a parent this. We want to look at the whole performance of that child, including classroom performance, and then align it with the other metrics we have on that student. So we're going to err on the side of notifying when the complete picture tells us it's appropriate to do so. But we need to be sure that parents know. One of the questions we did ask on the survey was, have you been told? And the percentages were pretty low for kids who actually performed below grade level on that fall MAP and did not think they had been told their child was struggling with reading. So we want to make sure that we are communicating that to families. Because I think that we've learned, especially in distance learning, families want to partner with us on this. So all right, so then we are moving on to curriculum. As you all know, we adopted the three components of the CCC curriculum, being a reader, being a writer, and making meaning. So we just were finishing year two this past year. The Being a Reader, which is K-2 and soon to be third grade, also they are publishing a Being a Reader in third grade, is a very systematic, explicit phonics sequence with phonetically regular books that are also used tied to writing activities that are also that are also aligned with the, the phonics skill that they're working on. So really a solid instructional approach that the neuroscientists and cognitive scientists would tell us are the best ways to teach students how to read in those early years. We also have a number of interventions that we use both in the Title One program, in the AdSIS program, in the classroom. And you can see the list of those right there. I do want to point out that SIPs, that excellent acronym, that means systematic instruction in phonological awareness, phonics and sight words. Woo, you can see why they turned it into an acronym. That actually is published by CCC and does align with the Being a Reader curriculum. And so we've had really good reports on that. We also use leveled literacy intervention, which is Fontis and Pennell product. Orton Gillingham, we have Lisa Nelson, who is trained. We have Rebecca Patterson, who did some training in Rochester as well. Sunde, which is another phonics program and then fluency interventions like HELPS and PRESS that teachers may use in their classroom or in small groups. So we feel like we have layers of support for kids who are exhibiting some reading difficulty. We have also devoted a heavy amount of staff training time to dyslexia. And that's both through CCC and their, their professional development. And then also Prairie Creek has two Level Two trained Orton Gillingham special ed teachers. And we collaborated with them to offer staff training in, in January of twenty twenty. Lisa Nelson also was part of that training. So kudos to all of them. It was a, it was a great session. We had an additional eighteen teachers attend the CCC Virtual Summer Institute this year, last year was in person. And CCC is, has ramped up their guidance for, for the twenty twenty-one school year. We're awaiting the very specific guidance about what to teach in the curriculum this coming year. And that's due out really by the end of July. I think what is interesting is that what we did the first year with CCC, which was to give everyone the SIPs placement test and we gave it to every student K five at Ready, Set, Go Day. Much to surprise, we had several meetings with CCC about that and how nobody else had ever done that. And, you know, they were going to help us and they did and they were very supportive. And we looked at the data together and what did that tell us about the starting point for our readers. And actually, that's what CCC is recommending across the country this year due to the COVID nineteen impact on, on reading progress. So they're actually recommending to districts and did so at the, the Virtual Summer Institute that everyone give the SIPs placements to, to their, to their students. So. So for fall twenty twenty, looking ahead, what CCC is recommending is, is expanded use of the SIPs program. Mostly because that program has accelerated growth to get kids back, get this kid the skills they need and back into the classroom with their, with their core reading class. So we know that there's going to be a demand for that. And then the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum is a program that is a very scripted, sequential, ten-minute-a-day phonological awareness program that's for students in grades K two. And I have universal inoculation there because in my conversations with Vicky Weinberg and Amy Schulting, you know, they, they really are saying that kind of curriculum, and they specifically have mentioned Hegarty, is, is, is a universal inoculation that benefits all students. And you are likely to prevent future reading struggles if a student has sequentially gone through that program. And so we, it is, it is actually relatively inexpensive. That's eighty dollars a, a classroom. And we've seen products that cost way more than that. But it's scripted and it can be done virtually, which is a big plus in this current year. So we are looking into that and then also looking at what, what we need to do. You know, we didn't test in the spring. MCAs were canceled. We didn't do spring MAP because MAP at that point wasn't set up for remote testing. But everybody's scrambling right now and MAP is saying they are set up for remote testing. And we'll talk about that in the assessment piece, but those are all the things we're looking at right now for the fall. So action planning for twenty twenty-one. We are going to have to make a decision on what to do about MAP at some point unless, unless MAP itself, the company makes NWA makes an adjustment in their, in their screening process. I was in meetings with them last year. They are concerned that they're no longer on the Minnesota list, so I expect them to do something about that. We also know that right now is not a good time to introduce a new online platform for testing with the current uncertainty in our whole schooling scenario. So we're gonna, we're just hanging tight with MAP right now. And we will see, we will look into that once we have a little more certainty about what the school year might look like. We are in, again, using the resources of Amy Schulting from MDE. And I had a long conversation with her about using that SIPs placement test. And really where we landed is SIPs is not normed for anything outside of CCC. So it's going to tell us that, you know, what gaps kids have, but it's not normed to anything. It doesn't have its own norms. So DIBELS actually is normed nationwide. And so her recommendation, and, and I agree after talking through this with her, is that we would screen everybody with DIBELS, which can be done virtually. And then anybody who's not meeting the DIBELS benchmark for their grade level, they would then get some further diagnostic testing, including SIPs. But we would, we would start with DIBELS, which our teachers are familiar with. We've done it at Ready, Set, Go Day. And so that's kind of where we're landing right now if we are not able to give a MAP test in the, in the fall right away. So that's, that's where we are for screening. The student needs, again, I think, I think their point to universal inoculation against reading difficulty in general is, is hugely important. If we are able to intervene on a four-year-old, a five-year-old, and a six-year-old, the, the time to remediate is far less than if you wait until that student is eight or nine years old. So we really wanted to identify who those kids are and really know what the explicit instruction that they need, we can provide. One of the things that we are looking at with Erin and Sarah Line is, is adding a dyslexia component into the preschool screener. So there, there are tools coming out. Somebody, Nadine Gab, who's a neuroscientist at Boston Children's Hospital, has worked on a, a four-year-old screener. So we're kind of keeping our eyes out for that. Vicky, Vicky Weinberg and Amy Schulting said, we don't need to buy that app. You can just add these questions into your preschool screening process. So that, that is also a possibility. So we know that we, this early, this early instruction and early screening will pay dividends because we will have kids spending less time in interventions. So we want to pay attention to that. And then on the opposite end of that, we know that we still have students struggling with reading at the middle school level. And so Cheryl and Sarah Pratt and I met with a couple of CCC folks, including Gina, who's their SIPs expert, about implementing SIPs in the special ed program at the middle school, specifically for kids who are struggling with, continue to struggle with reading at that level. And so that's something that we are putting into place this year. And then just overall, we know and are anticipating that we need to increase the number of teachers who are able to use the SIPs program. Right now, it's pretty much centralized on intervention teachers. But given what CCC expects in reading loss, we know we're going to have higher numbers of kids would benefit from that program in the fall. So we are looking on how we can do that in the classroom to serve more kids. And then this last page is information that is just really helpful for, for dyslexia and learning about it and how, how you can support dyslexic students in, in the school. These come from the MDE website, which is quite comprehensive, but I know that we get questions about this a lot. And so I just want to have the, the resources here in one place. And time for questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Hope. So I will ask board members for questions or comments. Tom?
Yes, and not all of them are formed because you have a lot of information. Thanks for that. So a couple of things. So is the is the focus mainly K, K through five?
Yes, although we do know that there is a need to work with this, kids with dyslexic tendencies in the middle school as well, that they would benefit from one of the SIPs levels in particular, which is written for older kids.
And so since this is being implemented now, we've got a, a high school full of kids who weren't evaluated according to this, in which case is there any way to evaluate them or give them support? And the other thing is, by the time they're at that age, they probably developed coping mechanisms or what was the, and compensated for their reading deficiencies in other ways. And I have, I had a friend in high school who, who struggled with this and I, so I could see what and this was back in the, you know, fifty years ago. So are there ways to get help in the high school or to like do screening now of, of some sort? Or to identify perhaps kids who are acting out in the, in the high school again? That, you know, there could be a lot of reasons, but maybe it's still that reading difficulty that even though they've managed to navigate it, it's still a fundamental, a fundamental problem that they have.
Yeah, you raise a really good point, Tom. And Lisa Bataglia, who is our reading AdSIS teacher at the high school, has, has worked really hard on this over, over the past four years in finding programs that really can, and address some of the particular needs of an older student who's struggling with reading. And really differentiating between what is actually a true reading problem and what is maybe some other kind of executive functioning, more comprehension problem. So, so she does offer intervention classes at the high school that are specific to reading, kids who are struggling in reading. The other, the other thing I think that is really important is, is Lori Warner. We're just going to give her a big shout out right now because she, she is really working with staff to increase accessibility to text in general. And so, you know, we were talking today just about when, when we buy curriculum and we need to make sure that those texts are available in multiple modalities for kids. And so, and, and then we were talking about even just independent reading time. Making sure that kids have access to grade level text, even if they're struggling readers through, through auditory, you know, books on, on tape, what are they on now? Audio books, but they need the book in front of them as well. So it's not just listening, it's actually looking at the print and, and listening as well. But, but Lori is vigilant about really making sure that we are looking at that. And I think it's an area that we continue to work on. But that's something that, Tom, we're doing for secondary students is not only helping them with their reading struggle, but making sure they have access to the text that they're using in their class.
And, and sort of related to that, having experienced with my kids, games, video games like Minecraft where you do a lot of typing and reading conversations. Are there, you know, this is the technology generation, are there other means other than a book that would help with reading skills?
Well, we think, we, we have some programs that the district purchases that are sort of gamey like that. They're not Minecraft. But, you know, we had almost two hundred external kids sign up for use of Lexia during distance learning, which is the program we use in K, K four. And there's also a, Rose Ternacle uses the related program. It's called Power Up. And it's a, it's sort of like a gamified way to build foundational skills for secondary students. So it's an online program that's specifically geared towards struggling secondary students. So it's not always a book by any means. In fact, we have found that, that some of our, some of our students love to have a goal that they, they know where the bar is that they're trying to reach. And, and that is super motivating to them. So we are trying to mix it up and make sure that, that we are providing multiple ways for kids to, to demonstrate their reading skills.
Okay, great. And so just sorry, one more quick question. So you describe a lot of methods for evaluating students and their reading skills. And that's been going on for, for years and years. And so how, how now is dyslexia, the focus on dyslexia different than what was happening in the past?
Well, this is a very I, I read, I spend a lot of time reading about this and, and it can be a very emotional topic. So we have, we have reading instruction that's happening in school and it's happening in colleges of education, like how to teach reading. And then we have neuroscience and cognitive science studying how the brain learns to read. And I, I actually just read one of the best articles. I don't know if people have read Language at the Speed of Sight by Mark Seidenberg out of University of Wisconsin. It's an excellent book about how the brain learns to read. And he just actually wrote a new article about a need for translational scientists who actually are going to take this information that cognitive and neuroscience know about how the brain learns to read and get it over here. Not only just so teachers know that information, but how do they use that information to change how they're teaching reading? So you are right that kids have been struggling to read, but we are really at a time and this is where this dyslexia push from parents is coming, is that this, this knowledge of the neuroscientists and the cognitive scientists is over here and we need to make sure that it's getting into the classroom over here with our kids. And that is really what's driving this push for state legislation. And so the state of Minnesota, for example, struck the words balanced literacy out of its legislation. And they call it structured literacy now. And so it's really, it's really marrying the cognitive and neuroscience with what's happening in the classroom. And it's not going to happen overnight and it's, and, and as you can imagine, we have to work with, with teachers, not against them, right? And so I, I feel like CCC was the absolute best pick for us as a district because it kind of has both of those things going for it. And so, yeah, that, that's really what's happening, Tom.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent questions. Thanks, Tom. Amy?
Thanks, Hope, for the presentation. I had some similar questions to Tom, that Tom had of sort of about the older students and how that works. But he mostly covered a lot of that. But I, I am still curious. Is dyslexia something you can learn your way out of? Or are you always a little bit dyslexic?
That's a great question.
My follow-up question is kind of related. So let me go with the follow-up question. Is it safe to assume that most of the kids, if they've been through the Northfield School District and are in middle school or high school, have gotten what they needed in the elementary years, did not have issues reading? did not have issues reading?
Well, if that's not a simple answer, right? I mean, if we look at our A C T scores and we go backwards, we know about 50 to 60% of our students reach the benchmark on the reading A C T. Now, we believe we can do better than that, right? And so that's where we started moving backwards and working with the high school team. Like, what do you think it is? And they thought it was a lot of fluency issues, which is why we adopted Reading Plus in grades five through seven. But if you go, if you, if you take our current high school students, you know that we did not have a district wide reading curriculum, right? We had a set of standards and we said, fly and be free. Teach those standards how you see fit. And so we know that for our older kids, there, yes, there are still some kids who probably are missing some foundational skills. And we saw that, we actually have confirmed that in the Lexia program, the first two years that we had it, we hadn't had CCC. And they do this whole analysis of your district assessment data, the benchmark data. And that was the number one weakness for Northville kids was foundational skills. And so we, so we know there were some times there's going to be a gap between when we catch up from this CCC curriculum and those kids move through the system. But we put into place some pieces to target those gaps, one of them being Lexia, that that would fill those foundational skills for kids who hadn't had CCC. So in terms of the older kids, yes, we still need to address their needs in particular. But we're hoping that as kids move through the CCC program, we'll see less of that need. And in terms of outgrowing dyslexia, you know, I would say I am not a dyslexia expert by any means. I've done a lot of reading on it. And I would say that you, what you learn are skills that help you cope with those tendencies. It's a spectrum, so you can have severe dyslexia to pretty mild dyslexia tendencies. And but we also know, and the neuroscience is clear on this, that they can be explicitly taught skills that you and I might have gotten automatically, right? That once they're taught and practiced, they become automatic. And that helps those kids overcome the severity of the dyslexic tendencies.
Okay, so a couple of questions. It sounds like we're trying to pinpoint the older students who might have gotten through the system of elementary school and maybe give them some extra help.
I would say we are doing that, both in the AdSis programming at the secondary.
Okay, then as far as numbers go, if I were to ask you, how many of Northfield Public School students have dyslexia? Would you say 187 plus or what sort of?
I would say that we do not diagnose dyslexia. What we do is look for dyslexic tendencies. And then it's up to, up to the family to seek a diagnosis. And I would, I will say, though, one of the things that is very clear in the research is that we don't want to over identify, right? We don't want a lot of false positives. And sometimes what is needed is just more explicit teaching in the classroom. And so we need to make sure that our core is strong. So what looks like dyslexic tendencies is not actually an instructional approach that is contributing to that reading difficulty. And that's one of the really great benefits of having a reading curriculum like CCC, because we know every student is getting, being a reader, and is getting explicit instruction in those foundational skills.
Would the correct question be, how many students have been diagnosed officially?
And I don't actually have the answer to that. I know that we have kids who are coming back with private diagnoses, but I don't have that number. I'm happy to look into that, Amy, and get back to you.
No, I'm just, I was just curious sort of numbers wise, but you don't need to look into it. I think you've given us a lot of good information. Thank you very much.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Amy. Rob, questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, Hope. I guess my question as someone who teaches languages other than English, that there are added difficulties when someone is trying to learn a foreign language, if they're struggling with dyslexia. So I'm just wondering about the impact of this on compañeros and E L classes and then French, Spanish, and German in the high school? If there are training for the teachers in those areas and other screenings and interventions for students?
So we do, I can speak to specifically the compañeros students. If they come to their building S S T with reading issues that we need to take a look at, we do, you know, put into place interventions. And then we do ultimately decide if the growth is not what we want it to be. We do look at whether compañeros is the best placement for them. And that's, you know, a conversation we have with the family and the S S T team at the elementary school. With our E L students, this is where it gets very tricky. And the school sites have just been masterful at working on what is typical growth for our E L students. So one of the things we do is look at those access scores that come in every year. And the state has now normed the growth. And so we know whether a student has met their growth target or has not met their growth target on their access test, which is the test of English language proficiency. And one of the subtests is reading. So we use that information. And I think this is, in our E L population, we need to, that's something we're going to take a closer look at this year. I'm not going to tell you that we have that down perfectly because we don't. And I think we're all learning as this, as we learn more about dyslexic tendencies, what that looks like in an E L student. And so I think that's an area for growth for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ellen, questions or comments?
No new questions. You covered so much information. And I had some of the same questions that have already been asked, so thank you so much, Hope.
All right. Jeff?
Do you know what Ellen said? And Hope, thank you for your research and your diligence and passion for all the work that you do.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Noel, any questions or comments?
Very informative report. Thank you very much. I have a question, if parents have reticence to have their child labor with dyslexia?
I would say that parents are really invested in finding out why their child is struggling in reading.
Okay.
And because dyslexia is now framed as a spectrum, I think that it's really a term that we know that we need to investigate more where the skill deficits are.
Thank you. Excellent report. Very informative.
All right. Thank you. Hope, thank you. I agree with board members. First of all, thank you, board members, for your excellent questions. And Hope for your really, really solid report and such a comprehensive view of the work being done for dyslexic students with dyslexic tendencies. So thank you. And the way that you're looking at it, you know, and how it's benefiting all students, I think is really excellent. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on now to our next agenda item, which is the summary of the superintendent's performance evaluation. So as board chair, I will provide the board with the summary. So we did, the board did do a summary of the annual performance appraisal for our superintendent, Dr. Hillman. The appraisal period was July 1st of 2019 to June 30th of 2020. So for this annual review period, all seven board members did complete the performance evaluation. There were 48 job responsibilities around eight major topics that were, that board members added numeric ratings and provided additional comments. So as board chair, I compiled and summarized all board members' input for Dr. Hillman's evaluation. All written comments were shared verbatim, but were not attributed to a specific board member. So as board chair, I met one on one with Dr. Hillman on July 1st, 2020, to review the appraisal. So Dr. Hillman received an overall score of 4.94 on a 5 point scale. His performance reflected outstanding work during the school year that presented previously unimaginable challenges. His exceptional work over the past year was highlighted by board members. A sampling of their comments was summarized around three key areas. And certainly no surprise, the abrupt change to distance learning was commented by board members across the board. Under his guidance, his strong and capable leadership team developed guiding principles and communicated these to the staff, the board, and parents. These guiding principles were not just words on a page, but served to shape how the district responded to and provided support for the enormous challenges it faces in institution. District surveys that reflected the vast majority of students, staff, and parents were satisfied with how the district handled distance learning is in itself a remarkable achievement. During these uncertain times, Dr. Hillman has been a steady reassuring voice and leader for the community. The board also cited Dr. Hillman's passion and proactive leadership relating to the difficult and pernicious state of affairs regarding race and equity, as it not only related to the school district, but also to the community as a whole. Partnering with Equity Alliance of Minnesota to provide the staff with implicit bias and cultural competency training, the formation of the district's Equity and Advocacy Committee has made the district a leader on these important issues. While these actions demonstrate Dr. Hillman's commitment to ensuring a world-class learning environment for every student, he readily acknowledged there is much work to be done. Dr. Hillman's leadership has been recognized statewide with his invitation to join the Minnesota Equity Partnership Superintendent Race Equity Leadership Network. So Dr. Hillman has been recognized statewide for his leadership and work on this issue. Dr. Hillman truly cares about his staff and students. He wants everyone to feel supported and welcome in the schools. But most importantly, he reaches out to the quieter voices, making the time to really listen to all community members. He truly excels at his job. So in summary, board members gave Dr. Hillman an exceedingly positive annual performance. His noted high level of knowledge, experience, vision, and passion for his work, as well as his strength of leadership, gives the board great confidence in his ability to tackle the complex challenges the district will face particularly in the coming school year. So as board chair, it was certainly an honor and privilege for me to be able to sit with Dr. Hillman and give him the summary of board members' comments and to provide this amazing evaluation that he so heartily deserved. I think board members also demonstrated or highlighted that he has demonstrated such powerful leadership and his ability to motivate and inspire those around him. Certainly, there were so many logistical things that needed to be handled. But most importantly, he became a trusting and caring leader. And those aspects of his leadership really shone bright. I think it's also important, as a board, I know that we acknowledge the personal toll that the distance learning took on Dr. Hillman and really the weight of the district and the community on his shoulders and how he shouldered that responsibility so incredibly well and how we were incredibly proud of the way he inspired all district employees to navigate the challenges and to keep moving forward. So it was just really, and I think it's also important to note that when all of the distance learning had to be implemented, Dr. Hillman had only been in partway into his fourth year as superintendent. So he will be starting his fifth year, or has started his fifth year July 1st. But I think as a superintendent, relatively young in his tenure as a district leader, just is a testament to the work that he did for the district down the community. So again, thank you to board members for taking the time to provide the evaluation of Dr. Hillman's work and particularly for your narrative comments that were really important in terms of him understanding how, you know, the evaluation of his work this past year. So I will pause for a moment and ask if board members have any comments they would like to share. I've certainly summarized a majority of them for this report. But if there's anything board members want to add that I might have not had as part of the report, I would really welcome those comments now.
I have something.
Yes, Rob?
I just wanted to, I'm looking here at the most recent document on contingency planning purposes and guiding principles for the fall. And there's a, you know, there's a nine items. And number seven is give ourselves grace. And I don't think that's a standard thing on these kind of documents. And I think that's really a mark of Dr. Hillman's leadership, that he thinks about that kind of intangible quality that we need to deal with this situation.
Thank you, Rob, for that comment. Any other, any other comments board members would like to add?
I would wish, thank Julie, I would like to thank Julie for putting all the work together to summarize everything and summarize it, what I believe in an excellent way. And congratulations to Dr. Hillman.
And I just wanted to say thank you for being such an excellent captain of the Northfield Public Schools ship as we navigate through the COVID-19 storm. I think you're doing an excellent job leading us through that. Thank you.
It is my really distinct pleasure and honor and privilege and all of those things to get to do this job in this place with this group of people. And so I am very grateful for board member's support and your confidence. As you know, I never take that for granted. I work hard very everyday, every day to make sure that you maintain and exceed. I try to exceed your expectations every day. You can't do this without a team. And I've got three of the best with us here tonight with, who I couldn't do this job without Anita Ozzy. She is just, she helps navigate and make sure everything stays on track. And then, of course, Erin and Hope and our principals and all of our staff. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the weight or the gravity of the situation that we dealt with in the spring and what we are about to deal with. But truthfully, it's the 500 employees who all come together in the pursuit of our vision. You see that we really focus on making sure we have clarity of vision in everything that we do. And I really think when we have clarity of vision, we adopt things like guiding principles and we motivate and get people around the work, whether that be principals, whether that be administrators, teachers, educational assistants, office employees, custodians, the technology staff, custodians. Everybody in the entire district came together and continues to come together because we have a laser focus on doing good things for kids. So when you have a team like that, it is, I've said many times, this is the best job I've ever had. It's the hardest job I've ever had, but it is the, it's the best job I've ever had. And it's really a privilege to get to do this. So I appreciate, again, the confidence and the support. And I look forward to getting to tackle some new challenges that we haven't had to before. Thankfully, I like that kind of thing, so we have a lot of those ahead of us.
All right. Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge Anita Ozzy for her work and helping to put the appraisal form together and for helping with the collection of the results. It's just been a much more efficient process since she's been on board. So I really appreciate that as well. All right, so we will move on to our next item for discussion and report, which is policy recommendations. This is the first reading for changes to policy 401, 402, and 407 that were included as in your packet. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, in addition to that, we also have the Northfield Public Schools Hand in Hand Preschool Handbook. I want to point out that you'll see in your packet that there are a number of places where it is highlighted. Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, we have submitted this. We want to get this. Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, as we have submitted this, we want to get this moving and approved, but there are a number of things that are still in flux. So for example, as you know, community education is moving to a renovated Greenville Park Elementary Facility. And so we are not sure that all the phone numbers will be the same yet. We think they will, but we're not exactly sure. You will also see under safety, there's some things around, in a traditional and a normal time, we'd have people make sure that they're dropping off and picking up each day in the classroom and preschool. That may or may not be possible this fall. So we bring this forward to you with the understanding that the bulk of it is there. However, there are some things that we just need to reserve the opportunity for change. And so then when you look at the other three policies that we're looking at this evening, they're very minimal changes. If you look at them, all recommended to you by the Minnesota School Boards Association, you'll see some, a real basic change under equal opportunity employment. Just changing the word gender to gender identity or expression to more reflect how we are looking at that particular issue these days. You'll also look at policy 402, Disability Non-Discrimination Policy. That is simply just renaming the department and who folks should contact. So it's special services opposed to student services, again, very minor. And then the final policy 407, that's really a technical change. The original definition pointed to a very specific part of federal code. And rather than trying to keep up with all of the changes in federal code, we are simply going to the more broad term, keeping it under the code of federal, of the federal regulations for OSHA. So some very basics, some very minor changes. Again, this is the first reading, and so we'll bring it back for you the next time to be approved. And I'm happy to answer any questions that are on these items at this time.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Tom, questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Thanks.
Amy, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of questions or really comments. First, I want to say of all of the handbooks, I'd like this one the best. Partly because of its length, but I think it's very clear and organized, and it's just addressed to the parents. One idea I had for it is it might be interesting just to have a little box that says, you know, the, the ideal hand-in-hand parent does, and then have little asterisks and, you know, doesn't let their child bring toy guns to school and, you know, doesn't send, but more positively worded. Just as a parent, I'm thinking, so if I'm a perfect parent, what do I need to do, you know? And sort of combine everything, but that would just be an extra idea. I think it's pretty complete the way it is. I also have a question about the hazardous substances 407. And I'm just curious to know what sort of hazardous chemicals are we exposing our staff to? And how many staff actually do we expose chemicals to?
So this is a policy that governs all of those kinds of things. For example, one of the areas that it would focus on would be in our chemistry area. So when we're working with chemicals and chemistry lab, things like that. In addition from, there are, from time to time, there are items that our custodial department may, this might govern our custodial department. We, of course, have all the safety material sheets on hand. We work very closely with IEA to make sure that we are following all the appropriate protocols. I don't have the number for you here tonight, Amy, but as you see, really, when you look at it, it's really talking about what are the definitions of those kinds of things that the policy is governing? And then it's also making sure around training to make sure that people understand. So I'm not going to characterize this as that we have a tremendous amount of these things, but there obviously are some things that we want to make sure there's explicit direction about how to use and any of the notification processes that we need to make, which we, of course, do each fall.
Okay, I guess I would sometime in no rush, but if it ever comes across your desk, I'd be interested in knowing just how many employees are routinely exposed to hazardous chemicals.
I'm fairly confident it's extremely low, if any at all.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. Rob, questions or comments?
I have no questions. I just want to thank the other members of the policy committee, especially the two students, especially Jack, who graduated and continued to come to our meetings. So Jack Rizzo, he's kind of a, and he always comes with really good observations and really good additions to the policies, so I'm really grateful for his participation.
Alan?
No questions or comments, and I would just echo what Rob, Rob said about the policy committee and the student members. It's been really fantastic.
Jeff?
No questions or comments?
No.
Sorry, I have to unmute Noel. My apologies. Go ahead, Noel.
No questions or comments?
All right, thank you. Yes, and again, the policy committee, time and time again, just proves how valuable it is to have them reviewing and updating our policies. So again, this is the first reading. We will approve these policies at our April, excuse me, August 10th board meeting. Right, so we'll move on to operations update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so you'll notice that I've renamed the previous five updates I had called COVID-19 updates. And we're now transitioning just to call it a superintendent's operation update, though we are going to take number six as opposed to restarting. They were formerly called the COVID-19 updates. So what I'm going to share with you briefly this evening, because I'm sure there are questions, is I'm going to really focus on the 2020-21 planning that we're working on right now. And I want to clarify one thing immediately. As we have started to see the national discussion about how schools are going to operate in the fall, we have to understand that state by state is going to have different ways in which decisions are made. And so as we see some of the southern states who are getting ready to go back to school, they go back to school about a month before we do, you're going to really start seeing some of this heat up. We saw today two very large metropolitan districts on the West Coast make decisions to start their school year in distance learning. In Minnesota, what I want to be really clear about is that Governor Walz and Departments of Health and Education, they provided guidance for us in mid-June that I'm going to share in just a moment. But they are scheduled to provide their decision for how we will start the school year on July 27th or the week of July 27th. So I've received a few messages, and I think there are some people under the who believe that it's the local school district that will make the decision to begin with. We have no information from the Department of Health or Department of Education that to begin with at least, that this is going to be a local decision. So we are waiting, just as everyone else is, for the week of July 27th to hear what the guidance and the decision at the state level is. I will tell you that after the initial state-level decision happens, I do think you are going to see some more surgical decision-making in how school districts operate next year. It could be regionally, where a one region might be working in one format of, of the three scenarios that they have presented to us as opposed to another. I do think that you will get to a point where you could even have a district-by-district decision with public health departments at the county level having a tremendous amount of influence in deciding what happens based upon how the virus continues to flare or not to flare. And I think that we're going to see even potentially school-by-school kinds of decisions. So you could see some larger districts that have multiple high schools, where one high school might be in full distance learning while the other two could be in in-person learning. That's how I think this is going to evolve during the school year. But to be very clear, what we understand had been told multiple times is that the state Departments of Health and Education will render the, at least the initial decision, and then we will move from there. So as I had mentioned, we have three different scenarios that the Departments of Health and Education have asked us to prepare for. In-person instruction without strict social distancing, distance learning. We, we're going to call it distance learning 2.0. While we, I were very grateful for the positive feedback about the emergency distance learning that we put together in the spring, we know that the next iteration of this needs to be more robust and stronger, which we are on track to make that happen. Again, I think if we think about our continuous improvement approach, we know that the next version will be better. And if we have to keep doing it for a period of time, we will keep getting better at it. The third option is a hybrid option, which would include some students learning at home and some students working or learning at school. So those are the three scenarios that we have been asked to prepare for. There are two guidance documents that I linked to you in the update. Over 100 pages of guidance for all three of these options between the Departments of Education and Health. If you are bored at night, you can read that guidance. And there's a lot of information and a lot of detail and some things that are very clear. Some other things that superintents across the state still have a number of questions on. And I will tell you upfront, every question answered right now, it gets another 10 questions. And so it is, it is some incredibly complex planning that we are working through. We have developed a team approach, a K-12 team approach. So rather than having grade-level bands begin to plan for the fall, so a group that would look only at elementary, middle school, and high school, we have formed three K-12 teams because we know that parents who have children at the elementary school and at the middle school are going to expect some reasonable consistency or similarity between the approaches to the best of our ability. That's one of the pieces we got loud and clear in our survey feedback, parents wanting more consistency across the system. And our three teams are working very hard to make that happen. The three teams that we're working through are obviously instructional design, and that is being led by Instructional Services Director Hope Langston. We have a team solely focused on logistics. Activities Director Joel Olson is leading this team, and his military background in the Air Force is really a strength right now as he thinks about the logistics and his team thinks about the logistics of how we would do in-person learning, how we might do a hybrid model, things to the level of, do we create one-way hallways to try to avoid exposure? That's the kind of work that the logistics team is doing. And Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall is leading our health and virus prevention team. So these teams have anywhere between 12 and 19 people on them. The ball got rolling by our administrative team in the first meeting or the first two meetings. Then we have invited a number of different staff representing all different stakeholders throughout the school district, including teachers and educational assistants, custodians, nurses, office assistants, our child nutrition team. We have lots of different people represented. We have representatives from the District Youth Council on each of the teams as well. So they are working really hard right now to solve issues. They are trying to work methodically. Most of these teams are meeting for several hours a week. The three leaders and I are meeting twice a week with intentional, our intentionality of trying to align the work that we're doing. And I am going to briefly share, as Dr. Hardy mentioned before, about our guiding principles. I'm going to briefly share my screen here so that I can show you what we're talking about. Because what we think is really important in these decision-making strategies is to have a clear vision and that a set of principles that we can use when we are making decisions that we have not made before, that no one has made before. There is no book to go back on this. Even, we have even really tried to study other nations and the work that they've done when they've returned students to school. But even they have, they're, they're only a couple of months ahead of us, and some of the decisions that they've made have proven to be right. Some of them have been proven to be wrong. But I'm just sharing with you, our purpose statement, and this is governing all of our work for the fall, is that the purpose of the North, of the 2020-21 Northfield Public Schools COVID-19 contingency plan is to support staff in developing a seamless system of instruction and services that meet the needs of every learner regardless of the scenario. We have been told to be anticipate using at least two, if not all three of these scenarios during the 2020-21 year, and that we may have to pivot to a different scenario in as, in as quick of a time as within 24 hours. So we have to be able to have a system where you can seamlessly move from one scenario to another. And let me tell you, this is not simple, right? This is, this is challenging stuff that we're looking at trying to make the best decisions that we can with the data that we have at the time. We want to model relationships first. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but we're looking at making sure that we focus on relationships first, that we ensure equitable access, because when we say all, we mean all. We want high-quality instruction regardless of the scenario. We plan to provide relentless support for every learner and staff member. We're going to monitor and adjust. There's nothing normal about this. People call this the new normal. I am calling it the, the current abnormal, because this is not normal. And we cannot make it normal, because it will not be. The last time we had something like this was a century ago. And so making sure that we understand this is not business as usual, that we are flexible and that we are willing to adjust our practices based on feedback, because as you well know, we really believe in continuous improvement. We want to have a reasonable level of consistency. This is something that we have clearly heard in the data from our parents. Make it so that we can, that there's some more predictability in our students' working day and the kinds of ways that we're going to get information. I really appreciate Rob pointing out the giving ourselves grace. We are going to make mistakes. I can guarantee it. That's the only thing that I am absolutely sure about, is that we are going to make mistakes. And something that sounded great in July is not going to sound so great in October. And we just have to accept that, and it's not that we have to like it, but we have to accept it and say that it's okay. And we have to say, okay, what's next? We will continuously improve. Stewardship, one of the big challenges that we are going to face is the immense pressure that is happening around how we come back to school this fall. We are not getting any, a ton of additional money. I'll share the CARES Act, but that's all that we know that we're getting right now, $380,000 out of a $55 million budget. You don't have to be a whiz to know that that really percentage-wise is not a lot. And some of the decisions that we are making, we have to weigh the long-term financial implications for the district with the immediate and short-term benefit. This is where some of the most difficult decisions are going to come in. To be able to do some things in the fall will be, can be very expensive, right? So how are we going to leverage that or balance that against what we know are the long-term financial needs of the school district? Remember, the pandemic is going to end. The final stage of a pandemic is demobilization. And so it is essential that we understand that we have a short term and we have a long term. We don't know when the virus is going to subside. We don't know when the pandemic is going to end, but we have to make sure we keep in mind balancing that long-term financial impact with the short-term decisions that we're making. And then finally, I know this is probably not one of the most popular things across the nation. We see a lot of discussion about whether schools or childcare are or not. We provide childcare. Erin very eloquently shared the processes that we use to provide childcare. And while public education is so much more than simply watching kids, we have to accept that we play a significant role in helping parents work with their kids and watch their kids and engage their students during the traditional workday. And so if we don't try, if we try to put that off to the side, all of our plans are going to be missing this key element. And so while public education is, of course, so much more, the fact is that we have to come back to that we do play a key role in childcare. And as we're looking at these plans, I believe we have to acknowledge and understand that. And so I just wanted to share those with you, because what I tell our administrators is that these guiding principles, if you, if you have to make a decision that we don't have time to fully get into, and you can defend to me that you use the guiding principles to make that decision, I will back you every time, right? Because we have said these are the things that are important in making decisions that people have not made in the past. And so I appreciate their dedication to this and, and their work with it. And we have all agreed that these are the principles that we're going to use when we're making these decisions. So I want to share with you just a handful, I'm going to share four problems that we're trying to solve. And I'm going to share them at a high level, and then I'm sure you will have questions about them. So when we get into the nitty-gritty of these kinds of things, the number one issue for nearly every superintendent in the state right now is if we're in in-person mode or we are in hybrid learning, how are we going to get children to school? The current guidelines for the Centers for Disease Control say we could fit 13 students on a 77-passenger bus. That was a dramatic pause. If you don't have to be a math wizard to know that that is going to be very difficult, right? We normally transport around 3,000 students a day. Excuse me, you think about the multiple tiers that we would have to run to get people to school, and we know that it's an issue. Now, the good news is, we are trying to think creatively. We are working with Benjamin Bus. Benjamin Bus is represented on our logistics team, Jenna Dartis. They're a director of safety operations and our key contact as part of our logistics team. They've been working through how transportation could work in a number of scenarios. We are hearing there are some mitigation strategies that would allow us to increase the capacity of students on the buses. But we, Jenna and I are meeting this Wednesday to go through what we've discussed so far and to try to troubleshoot and brainstorm. go through what we've discussed so far and to try to troubleshoot and brainstorm how we can make this, make this work. Trying to think as creative, creatively as we possibly can. Erin described the health screening. And Erin was talking about not, you know, several dozen children, right? But we're not talking about 4,000 students a day being health screened at the door. Even if we are in a hybrid mode and we have half the students, just by way of example, and you have 2,000 students in a day. You can just imagine that trying to do an individual health screening of every student at the door. Is logistically challenging to say the least. So we are really exploring the feasibility of one of the CDC options, which is to do a self-reporting. A screening, much like what Community Services is piloting for us this summer. We're looking at a variety of things. We're really trying to see if we can find a system that would, like your dentist. Texts you and says, hey, remember you have an appointment? Are you coming? Yes or no? We're trying to find a text-based system that people could be prompted in the morning. They could answer the question. It would go into a database that we would then be able to check as students come in to make sure that they've completed the health screening. Of course, that also has its drawbacks, right? So we know that we, we know that that will be a challenge. No matter which way we go on some of these things, there are problems with them. That we will solve and problems that frankly, we will not be able to solve given the current circumstances. Face coverings, all of the guidance that we're seeing does say that any kind of in-person or hybrid scenario will likely bring some kind of face covering for students and for staff as they're here. We know that the emerging research and there's more than emerging research around face masks and their ability to, to prevent transmission of the disease. We also know that the, a face mask is not something that is for everyone. So we've been working hard with Rice County Public Health. And the Department of Health to try to create a menu of face covering options that people are able to utilize. We are looking at offering a multi-size mask from Windcraft out of Winona, Minnesota. So a local company that we're trying to work through, very inexpensive at $2.25 apiece. We are also looking at face shields. So there is emerging research that face shields provide similar protection. And the Department of Health prefers those for younger students who may not be able to handle having the mask on or console the mask or infect it, not infected, but not make it as effective by touching it and moving it. So we are looking at some face shields from a company out of Sal Saint Paul. And then we are also looking at some that have almost a glasses feature that you can use to put on, especially for adults and high school students. So we're looking at ordering quite a bit of these. We're not, we're looking at some kind of face mask for every student that we would offer to them. We're going to have less than one per person of the face shields as an option. We can always look at getting more if we need to. And then of course, a gator, which is almost just like a scarf that you can pull up over your, your nose and your mouth is an option that people could choose to use if they wanted to. Or a bandana is something else. And so as we continue toward the year, we're looking at having these things available because if we do have people in person, which, let's also take a moment. Every educator in this district would prefer to be back with kids on September 8th. There's nobody that would say, oh, I'd prefer to be only online. There is, everyone in the world would like us to be back. We also want to make sure we're back safely. And that for the students and the staff who are here, we are able to make sure that we provide what the reasonable person would say is the, the best level of protection. And so we're really working through those face covering options because we think that that's going to be something that is going to be necessary to be able to get people onto campus if that is what the governor and his departments choose to do. We also are working on survive, looking at people with underlying health conditions. So we know that we have around 16% of 400 staff, around 16.8% of around 400 staff members who completed a survey who indicated they would not be comfortable coming back at all face-to-face in the fall. And when you get to it, it isn't because they don't want to be with kids or they don't want to be here. It has to do with either an underlying health condition that they have that puts them at greater risk for, if they were to be infected. Or they live with someone who has an underlying condition. And so we also have students in that case. Through the first 800 responses that we had from our student survey, nearly a quarter have said they would be uncomfortable coming back in anything but distance learning. Excuse me. And so those are just, just four of the problems that we are trying to solve. And so we will continue working with this. We will continue moving forward. We have, as you know, we've gotten high ratings for our communication with both staff and with families. We sent a family update out last week. We will most likely be back into that weekly mode of some kind of update each week. We'll send a reminder out about the student survey tomorrow. And then give families a little bit more of an update as the week goes on. So those are the items around COVID-19. I'm not going to get deep into all of the work of each of those teams because we could be here for another four and a half or five hours trying to get into that. What I want you to know is that our people are committed to putting together the best plans that make sense for Northfield. People are going to hear about a lot of different plans in other cities and we are all working together. So I am meeting right now with two groups of superintendents, weekly or bi-weekly. And there are school districts to our north and school districts to our southeast. Everyone is coming together to try to problem solve this. But what, what, you, people think that every school district is similar and it's not true. There are issues in other districts that we don't have and issues that we have that they don't have that we are all trying to problem solve. We're doing it collaboratively, but some of these issues are things that have to happen in a specific school. It could be facilities. It could be the way that they've transported students. It could be a number of other kinds of impacts on their community. So we will continue moving forward, doing the best that we can to create the, the most robust plans possible. Our goal is to have what I'm telling our teams, we want to have what I call 90% plans done by July 24th. This means that we have enough of the plans that we can explain to people what we're looking at. Then when we know which option we are going to use to begin with in the fall, we prioritize finishing those plans. Based on the one that we're going to start with and then go from there and provide staff training and a number of other things. One piece I want to share with the board that I did not include with, in the report that I just want you to, to think about a little bit. We are, we are getting strong feedback from our instructional team. About the need to do something different at the beginning of the school year. So one of the things I'm going to most likely ask you to consider at our next meeting. Is authorizing us to take what would have been the first traditional week of school. So September, I think it's 8th, 9th, 10th and 11th. That Tuesday through Friday, right after Labor Day week. And we have, have a concept where we would like to meet face-to-face if possible, or via video conference with every single family in the district. This is for a variety of reasons. Number one, we want to make sure that we are able to explain to them our plans face-to-face or individually so we can best support them. The other piece is it's an opportunity for us to really dig into what, how has the, the pandemic and other kinds of societal issues like the murder of George Floyd. How have those things impacted their families since we have last seen them? That is going to be really critical for us to try to create relationships as we start the school year. So thinking about using those first four days rather than having direct instruction. Trying to meet with every single family to be able to have this interactive dialogue. So of course, at the elementary schools. It would be somewhat similar to ready, set, go day and that kind of concept. At the secondary, they wouldn't be meeting with every teacher, but with a designated teacher who would be able to interact with them. So I just want to share that with you for your pondering, if you will, because we think that this is a really important way to support the social, emotional learning of our students and our families coming back. Finally, I want to give you a brief update on our anti-racism work. As you know, we've talked about this quite a bit this summer. We will continue to move forward, working tirelessly to eliminate systemic racism, period. And we are working with the City of Northfield and Northville Healthy Community Initiative, me meeting them later this week. We are looking at trying to create a broader community coalition of organizations to work together because we know that the Northfield Promise example has shown us that if we are all working in the same direction. And if we're not duplicating services, we can really accomplish great things. We also know that we have talked about the Equity Alliance in Minnesota work. I'm not going to reiterate that. I do want to share with you the immediate action that's happening this summer that our high school, English and Social Studies Departments are reviewing their curriculum. They're looking at making adjustments this summer as part of a longer-term effort. For making sure that our instruction includes more diversity in authors and has a wider perspective of history. So ensuring that we listen at this moment in history. For ensuring that people see themselves represented in the curriculum. And we cannot look people in the eye and say that that is the case right now. So we are starting this longer-term process with our English and Social Studies Departments at the high school. And that is immediate action that is taking place this summer. And I want to share with you just briefly. We are working to develop what I'm calling an anti-racist framework with three action areas that we're going to be focusing around. The first is symbolism. And we have to understand that symbolism does play a role in reinforcing racist stereotypes and narratives in our society. We have to look at systems behavior. So systems, things like our curriculum. Hope Langston talked about a system when she talked about the system that we have for identifying dyslexic tendencies and then intervening to assist those students. We have to intentionally look at our systems to make sure that they are anti-racist and that they are providing equitable access and support for every child, not for some children, and that it's real access, not just perceived access. And then the final area, if you will, is individual behavior. We all have a responsibility for our own individual behavior. And making sure that we recognize that we all have our own biases. And we all, from time to time, have some kind of racist thought. As part of, if you read the research about it, most people engage in that from time to time. We need to make sure that we're able to talk about that and that we're saying it, it is, it is it is not, it is something that is, is normal for people to, to have those kinds of thoughts. We need to understand how to interrupt them and how to interrupt them for ourselves and for others. And so if we don't recognize that, we really can't go forward in a number of the other things. I'm not just talking about book clubs or things like that with individual behavior. We're talking about really helping ourselves deeply reflect about the work that we do. And how that we are making sure that our individual behavior is contributing to a system that is explicitly anti-racist. I'm also proud to announce with you this work that Bridgewater Elementary Principal Nancy Antoin has been appointed to a National Task Force on Race and Equity. She's been named by the National Association of Elementary School Principals Association. And she will be working on this at the national level. So you know that we are dead set on making sure that we have a world-class learning environment for every student. And a world-class learning environment is anti-racist. We have oceans of work, galaxies of work to go yet. But we will not stop and we will keep moving forward to make sure that every child feels seen and valued and that they actually have access to what our, what the Declaration of Independence says, which is the pursuit of life, liberty and happiness. And so that is the work that we're doing and we will continue to work on that relentlessly. I, I, it's going to take a long time, but we will continue to work on it. So two very important things. That's my report for this evening. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Homan. Tom, questions or comments?
Yeah, trying to be brief. Thanks for the work on the racism. I know it's a challenge and something that's going to take persistent commitment. So just a couple of things. I, I like the first week plan of meeting with all the families. I think, you know, the kids are just coming back from school. It's not a very productive time anyway, and given we don't even know what that's going to look like and what it looked like in the fall. I think that's, that's a good plan to get everybody just grounded again. And then just two things. So if less people take the bus and maybe more families drop off, especially in the area around the roundabout, that could cause construction or just traffic difficulties. So I don't know if that needs to be at least considered. And then the second thing would be, you know, to have a supply of face masks or shields or whatever, could you, would it be worth polling the families to see how many could provide that on their own? And then just make up the, the difference so we're, we don't end up with a huge supply that doesn't get used?
Yeah, Tom, I appreciate both comments. Thank you. The transfer, what you described is probably the next layer of our seeking family feedback. You know, as I mentioned, we have around 200 students who have indicated distance learning would be their only preferred option at this point. And that's only through about a fifth of our students reporting. So we know we're going to have to probably look at some kind of distance learning only track for people who want that for the whole year. So that's something that we're working on. So we could have a group of students who are in distance learning the whole year. And other groups who are going through those three different scenarios depending upon what the public health condition is. So as we get our handle around that, hopefully in the next week. That's going to give us some more information about transportation and thinking about what we could do. There are some other tools that we could consider. We are, we are just looking at because it's due diligence. You know, what would happen? How would that impact our transportation? If we expanded the walk radius around our schools, right? Because we are allowed to go up to two miles, we're required to transport students two miles and beyond. As you know, we do much better than that because we think it's important. When we get into that kind of thought process, we run into some equity issues around some populations that we know have really benefited from having some transportation within that two-mile radius. So we're really looking at all of those different things together. And then Tom, on the face mask and those other pieces, I, I think we're at a point where we would need to say that if we are expecting, if we expect people to do that, we at least have to provide them something. So we were initially looking at, because we're concerned. Jim Colseth is outstanding, our Buildings and Grounds Director, and he has ordered stuff before other people even knew they needed to order stuff. So I can tell you, we got plenty of soap and hand sanitizer. We're in great shape with that. We've got a great cleaning and disinfection plan. That Jim and, and the team have worked through. But the issue is if we don't get some of these things ordered fairly soon. We, we could be in a case where we might not be able to get them to, to begin with the school year. So we're going to lower the number of face shields that we're ordering. And at just a couple of dollars apiece, we think that the face masks are a good. Having them on hand is a good insurance policy. Should that be the way that we need to end up going.
So again, about the, so if you widen the, the walking radius, more people may choose to drop off their kid. And again, in the roundabout area that where the construction is still going to be going on at the beginning. That could cause problems. I don't know if we would need to work with the city or just at least think about what, what that could look like when all of a sudden you got twice the traffic that we're, we're used to.
And we have worked extensively with the city on that. They, we were involved in be able to help create the detours. And Benjamin Bus has been part of that process as well, looking at that. So as you said, we don't know how far they're going to get before the start of the school year. And so we will be working with families to let them know what the appropriate ways to bring their child to school are.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Amy, questions or comments?
Yes. Well, Matt, after you're talking about eradicating systemic racism, I felt like I should stand up and give you an standing ovation because it was very inspiring, everything you were saying. And I'm really glad that you feel so strongly on that topic and you're really working to to help the school district treat everybody fairly and equally. I guess my question is, do you know when the roundabout is supposed to be finished?
Yeah, so we know that we understand that the roundabout, the latest it could be done would be early October. I believe is what I'm recalling, though we, we know that they're making good progress. There was a lot of complications to begin with. They, I think most people would have said, why didn't they just start earlier when we didn't have students on campus? I think people don't realize the amount of utility work that had to happen along Division Street and that work had been being planned for months. So for example, there's one local communications provider that had to relocate all of their equipment from one side of the street to the other. And if they had completely disrupted this particular service that they provide to people. Folks wouldn't have been happy. So it's a very thoughtful process in which they go about doing it. So we will, we will not know. We do believe it will go beyond the beginning of the school year. We cross our fingers that we keep having great weather for them to accelerate and be done early. But we know that they'll understand the latest it could be would be October.
All right, that, that will be very messy to have that happening when school starts, but
And, but that's also total completion of the project. So you know, it is, it is possible that the intersection itself could be opened earlier and there may be some finishing pieces around it. What I'm talking about is the, the finished project.
Great. Thank you.
Rob, questions or comments?
A couple of things. First of all. One of the things that was on Erin's list was flexibility, flexibility, flexibility and I'm, I don't want to see a situation where we decide that we're going to have students and teachers come back in person. And have a teacher have to decide between protecting his or her health because of existing, you know, conditions. Or teaching. I mean, I don't want someone to have to decide, I'm going to have to quit because I can't do this thing that I'm being asked to do. I can't do this thing that I'm being asked to do. So I, I think we really need to have options available for people depending on their circumstances, regardless of what the final outcome is.
Yeah, Rob, that's something we're, we are working on diligently and it's not, I wish it was a one-to-one, you know, right now where we knew, oh, we have these people who can't come back and here are the students. It, it works out perfectly. So one of the things that we are looking at is if, as we provide, as we look to provide one track of distance learning, can that track of distance learning be provided by the, especially the teaching staff and potentially educational assistants and other folks who aren't able to come back? And we put that, that group of people as the team, you know, who are going to do the distance learning component. Now, while we would all love that to work out perfectly, we understand we still have to follow teacher licensure rules. We are thinking creatively of some ways that we could do, especially at the secondary, that differently. That part, we are still, I wish I could tell you that we had that all solved now, but that's still part of the process that we are developing at this point of how to do that completely online distance learning component for families. We would also want to have flexibility for those students. It's possible some students might want to start in distance learning and say, oh, wait, semester time, I want to come back now. We have to have the flexibility, you know, for that as well. So we will do everything that we are able to, to be able to provide people who are not able to come back and who are able to show that we are going to need to require some kind of physician's note that, you know, this, that you're not really eligible to come back. We need to make sure we have that level of understanding. And then we will work with people to provide them meaningful work to do that. Now, in a worst-case scenario, Rob, we would of course support people with a leave of absence in terms of we would not want someone to resign because again, we know the pandemic is going to end. It is possible, Rob, that there could be a circumstance that even despite the best effort, and I think we have a history of working with people and trying to meet their needs to the best of our abilities. But there does come a point where we may need to offer to people a short-term or even a year-long unpaid leave of absence, should they need that. Now, there are some federal programs to help folks in that circumstance. We will do everything that's reasonably possible, you know, to try to avoid it. And it's the balance, balance between we have to run this very unpredictable school year and we want every employee to be with us and come back. You know, if you're not able to be with us in person during the pandemic, we want you back when it's over. So Molly Beasley, our HR Director, myself and Hope Langston and Cheryl Hall, Special Education Department, we've been working on how, how can we match these things up to get the most, to, to try to meet as many needs as we possibly can?
Great. Um, and then I wanted you to talk a little bit. I've heard from so many parents that, you know, what they're dealing with really is increased levels of anxiety and depression and that the mental health toll of this situation has been huge. I mean, not even factoring in the education loss that that kids are really dealing with some difficult issues and it seems like, I mean, the county is not really equipped to deal with mental health issues. We've seen that even before this happened. So it, it ends up being something the school has to provide services for. So I'm just wondering if there is kind of a mental health crisis plan or something to, to help children deal with everything they're going through.
Well, Rob, you know, we, we have a crisis plan that addresses mental health kinds of things, but not on this level, not on what you're describing. So that is part of the reason that we're, we're considering this first week of just meeting with parents, right? To be able to create that and to be able to make sure we can take an inventory of what is necessary. We're also looking at what does our first face-to-face or online instruction look like? There are a lot of things that we're going to have to be intentional about how we try to process. And as you all know, I'm a big believer in Maslow's hierarchy of needs to make sure that we have that base strong before we really are able to start to get into academic content. So that is something that our instructional design team will be looking through as well. As you may remember, all of our, I'm fairly certain all of our staff have been trained in youth mental health first aid. And so while that is not a clinical piece, at least our people do have, most of our people, the last training was, I think, two years ago and we do recertify every so often. So, you know, we do have a, a large chunk of our staff who have had that youth mental health first aid training. Again, that doesn't mean that they can intervene, but it does provide them the opportunity to be able to do some triage. We're also going to be working with our students, Supporting Students Program, you know, of course, that has been really highly rated by our students. And at the end of the day, we are not equipped to handle clinical mental health issues either as our own staff. Now, we have great partnerships with something like Fernbrook, as we've talked about before, where Fernbrook is providing some services in our schools. What we know is that when we have a really strong relationship with kids, which we endeavor to every day, they will talk to us and then we are able to make those connections to be able to help people. If we are not able to help them in school with our team of school psychologists and school social workers and counselors, we will certainly connect them with other resources if it's beyond what we're able to do. I say this many times that we teach children first and the academic content second. And so this is what we're going to have to focus on to begin with. Our instructional design team has a great plan. They're intentionally looking at saying, how do we narrow the content that we teach during the year to the things that are the most important? Because of the unpredictability, what are the standards, what are the content areas that we really have to make sure that we get done? And that's done intentionally. So we are able to try to work with the whole student and not just saying, oh, we're back, we're right back to complete academic content. Some kids are ready from that, ready for that right away. Lots of kids are not.
And can I ask one more thing?
Please do.
So, some states like New York have kind of gone on a more granular level. And so, for example, my old home county of Tompkins County has had no cases for quite a while. So they're at a different, you know, risk level. So they can open up a little bit more. And so I'm just wondering if Minnesota has thought about that and if Bryce County ended up having, going for like two weeks or something without any cases, that it would be, it would move the schools into a different position of having kids back or whatever?
Yeah, I'm not a, I'm not a betting man, Rob, as you know, but I would say that I do think you are going to see, I think there might be an initial statewide direction. And I think that that is going to evolve into some more region-by-region, county-by-county and school district-by-school district decision-making, again, with public health departments being the, the real driving factor in that. But I do think you will see that as we go on, I, I do think we will end up seeing something like that. I don't have any inside information. I've not been asked to serve on any of the governor's task forces or anything, but my gut hearing, some of the things that I've heard in, in the superintendent's calls leads me to believe you're going to see some more granular decision-making begin to happen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob, for the great questions. Ellen?
Say one comment and one question. And my comment is just, thank you for putting at the forefront the, the justice and equity piece with the anti-racism work, you know, that it's, we're not just looking at a pandemic, but we're, we're still keeping that on the forefront. So I appreciate that, Dr. Hillman. My one question, it, it sort of piggybacks a little bit on what Rob was getting at and what you just alluded to in terms of differentiation across the state being potentially something that will arise. And then your suggestion, which I really like about these, these early meetings. And a concern is just whoever is facilitating these meetings with families being on the receiving end of, you know, everyone has different opinions. Things are becoming even more divisive under these circumstances. And we, you know, we've already seen in the spring where, you know, the way our district chose to do things and other districts chose to do different things that people have opinions. So I guess I just, my question is, how to best equip whoever's facilitating this meeting so that they are not on the receiving, that, that it falls into the purpose that you want and it doesn't end up on a receiving end of, you know, and having a sort of a morale issue unintended?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things, Ellen, that we'll focus on. Number one is we will make sure if, if this is the route that we end up choosing to go, and I do think this is something I will be bringing back to you for formal consideration at the August, the first meeting in August, excuse me, is really providing the why upfront to our families and really explaining this is the purpose of this meeting. What we know is when we provide people with a clear and compelling why, they will often come to the table ready to discuss what we asked to discuss. Well, you know, we can also make it very clear that, you know, you know, the people that you're meeting with, you know, aren't in the decision-making position. And so we ask that, you know, we, we actually have a, we actually have an agenda for the meeting already created, thanks to Hope Langston and her instructional design team. And then, of course, what we would coach our teaching staff on is that, you know, if, we would always give them some resources where they could direct people. And then if, if we can't come to, if that doesn't work, we always have our administrative team who are always willing to, to step in and help out with these kinds of discussions.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for all the, the feedback. You know, let's keep focused on being experts in education and we don't necessarily need to be experts in COVID. I, I loved you, I love your, the current abnormal, you know, I don't like that phrase, the new normal. No, this is a season. It's, it's a weird season, but it's a pandemic and we're going to get through it. So, you know, whatever happens this year is going to be different. And Rob had some great questions and same stuff that I had to ask too, but you know, it's just, you know, I get back to the, you know, the playbook and of course, I'm a football guy, but you know, get back to the playbook and then calling audibles. I mean, every, every administrator, every principal, every teacher is going to be, you know, and like you said, starting out in September, it's not probably going to look the same as what we're doing at the end of October. So I think that we all, you know, work together on that and just also extremely concerned about the mental health issues and that the consensus is that people do want to be back to school. And I think we do need to be in communities and we need to, especially kids, we need structure and we need all of that stuff. So I think that, you know, we're moving that way and I think what
Well, I think we lost Jeff there for a moment.
With race, keep moving forward.
Thanks, Jeff.
No questions?
I'm not a medical doctor, right? I do have a doctor, but I'm not a medical doctor. You don't want me making those medical decisions.
No questions or comments?
Yes, I have two. I think the meeting of the parents is excellent. And, and I think it's going to develop into a two-way street so that there will be some ideas that will be shared to the parents and parents have some concerns will share with the district and it will be, I think, a very positive outcome. Secondly, in my opinion and my notes, I think starting in the fall is going to be devastating to our budget and to our fund balance. And I don't think we can adequately predict what the impact is going to be. And I, I think we have to look at that. Our, our goal is to educate children. We can't run out of money, but our goal is to educate children. And, and that's what we have to do and the community has to understand that. And I think they do. So, thank you, Dr. Hillman.
Thank you, Noel. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Hillman, for, for this, this update and, and really just highlighting just a few of the challenges. They are, you know, I, I don't know, it's, it's daunting and I know that we are so fortunate to have incredibly smart, dedicated and passionate educators who are not only the team leaders, but also members of these critical planning teams. And with you at the helm, we, we understand we will navigate the challenges as best we can. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on now to the financial update. I think Noel gave a nice precursor to the topic of the financial update. So, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just have a verbal update for, I'm going to keep it very brief considering the time. You know, in previous meetings that we have spoken with you about the grid, the Val-Murder Store of Art Director of Finance is put together, looking at the different pressure points as a result of COVID-19. We've shared with, with you with those in previous meetings. Obviously, the transportation discussion that we've had. If we could even, if we even had the ability to increase the number of buses, I'm not sure you could find the drivers to do that. That comes at a pretty substantial cost. But I'm going to share one piece of data with you for tonight that is just an example of how we have these unknown costs that will come at us. So we just paid a bill for $67,278 in unemployment. Let's just say that that's more than what we normally pay by quite a bit. Now, we have statutory authority when we put together the levy for the fall. We will, we are able to levy for all of our unemployment costs. But this is just, and as you all know, we were able to keep everyone employed through the end of the school year at their regular hours. In some cases, we did have some people due to some circumstances where they needed to request an unpaid leave, leave of absence. That was something that unemployment could cover. We also are responsible when, if someone has more than one job and if they were furloughed from another job, we have partial responsibility for the unemployment even from that other job. So unemployment is just, so this is just the one data point tonight. We've shared numerous with you at previous meetings. But this is something that Val texted me and said, you need to make sure you share this with the board because it is highly unusual compared to what we normally pay for unemployment, our employer portion of unemployment insurance. And so we will levy for that in the fall. But this is just, this could be just the beginning of that. So I offered that piece of data tonight as our financial update, along with the other things that I think you heard me talk about during the update on our preparations for COVID-19. Or for the fall, not preparing for COVID, but for the fall semester.
Okay, thank you. I will run through board members if there's any questions regarding the financial update. Tom?
No, nothing. Pass.
Amy?
Pass.
Rob?
Pass.
Ellen?
Nothing. Pass.
Jeff?
Pass.
And Noel?
No question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few items in the table file that were to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
On the memberships, are we still a member of the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, it is. I don't believe that that is one that requires board approval. So I actually just, I just approved that purchase order today. So you're not seeing it in this because I, that does not necessarily require on an annual, see, some of these organizations require on an annual basis that we take action.
Okay, thanks.
Great question, Rob.
Every month. So I'm sure we're, we're a member.
Thanks, Rob. So, anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. We have a motion and a second. So Anita, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Roniak?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Dropmon?
Oh, hold on, I gotta, I gotta unmute Noel. Forgive me. Go, Noel?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on now for items for individual action. We do have three items this evening. Because there are individual action, items for individual action, I will ask for a motion and a second prior to asking questions or comments. So is there a motion to approve the master lease purchase agreement for 450 each iPads, cases and Logitech crayons at a total cost of $173,542.36?
Motion, Tom?
Moved by Tom. Second.
Second.
Second by Amy. Thank you. Questions or comments regarding the iPads to ensure a one-on-one ratio for K2 students? I will run through the board members. Again, Tom, questions on this motion?
Pass.
Amy?
No questions.
Rob?
No questions.
Ellen?
Dr. Hillman, can you remind me again of how this, the timing of this goes with some of the other obligations?
Yeah, so we're proposing this so that we can finish off one-to-one in K1 and 2, which we know we are able to make work during distance learning by having families supplement with their own devices. As we worked through, it was not quite the case where we, we realized we needed to do this to be prepared for the upcoming school year. The first two years of the lease we would pay for from the CARES Act money- The first two years of the lease we would pay for from the CARES Act money. So the first two $43,000 payments would come from the CARES Act. When we were getting about $380,000, we're reserving some of that for St. Dominic because there's a, there's a question of whether that money is intended to be used with parochial schools. It's, there are several states that have sued the federal government determining that, so we're reserving some of that. But basically, we'd commit about $86,000 of this to pay for the first two years of the lease. The last two years of the lease would be paid for out of our operating capital budget, which we'd be prioritizing, of course, to make sure these leases are paid. Now, the thing that we have in our advantage is at the end of this lease, so in 2024, December 1st, 2024, we make our final purchase on the Sibley lease, lease purchase agreement. So that the Orange Hallway at Sibley, that lease expires and we're paying that lease out of our capital dollars as well. So even though we're adding to the operating capital, we are able to be thoughtful because we know we'll be able to get those dollars for the year after this lease ends, back from the Sibley lease payment, back into the operating capital budget. We feel that we're in very good position. There's a lot of other districts having to buy much more than this. It's fairly small. These devices, as said, will go to staff members. The staff members' devices will go to the K1, 2 students to make sure that all students have the exact same device because of course, we can't purchase the same device we did just a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Jeff?
No questions or comments?
Thank you. Noel?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Anita will conduct the roll call vote.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, excellent, motion carries, thank you. Our second item for individual action is regarding our fiscal year 2020 audit engagement letter and business associate agreement. So is there a motion to accept the 2019-2020 engagement letter from Clifton Larson Allen in the amount of $23,700 plus other expenses?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All right, so I will ask board members for any questions or comments on the motion. Tom?
Pass.
Amy?
No questions.
Rob?
No questions.
Ellen?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Noel?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, no questions or comments. So Anita, roll call vote, please.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Excellent, motion carries. Okay, our last item for individual action is one we need to do every year to so that the board can conduct a business on a federal holiday. So, is there a motion to approve the following resolution regarding Columbus Day? Whereas Minnesota statute, actually, I think in the interest of time, board members have the resolution regarding Columbus Day with the language from the state. So I'll ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second?
Second by Amy.
Second by Amy. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Again, I'll run through board members, any questions regarding the resolution? Tom?
Pass.
Amy?
No questions.
Rob?
No questions.
Ellen?
Pass.
Ellen, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, Jeff?
No questions.
And Noel?
No questions.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion and a second. This is a resolution, but we will obviously conduct a roll call vote as well.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Excellent, motion carries. That does conclude all items for individual action. We are at a time of 9:55. We do have a few items for information. I believe, just in the interest of time, if there's a motion and a second so that the board could move past 10:00 PM. If, at this juncture, it would probably be for only a few minutes. So, is there a motion?
Sure.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Amy that we will be able to continue past 10:00 PM. And there's a second by Jeff. So, let's ask for a roll call vote on the motion. Tom?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anita, I'm conducting the roll call vote for you. I apologize. In the interest of record keeping, we will have Anita conduct the roll call vote.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon? Stratmon?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. All right, motion carries. Thank you, board members. Again, we will only be a few minutes past 10, but there's a couple of items that we want to be able to provide all information and allow for times for, time and opportunity for questions or comments. So, we'll proceed with items for information. Filing for school board. Dr. Hillman, did you want to provide a brief update on that as the July 28th filing date approaches?
Yes, and so what we want to make sure that people understand is that the information I'm going to share is also on our school district website. We do have four board positions on the ballot in November. We are a school district that does not run a primary election, which is why our filing dates are a little bit later than some other governmental agencies. Filing for school board is from July 28th through August 11th, and it's in the district office. We have to have the affidavit of candidacy filed in the office of the school district clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 on August 11th. Candidates should contact Anita, 507-663-0629, to arrange an appointment to file. You, of course, in our circumstances right now, we're not able just to have people walk into the district office. So they need to contact or to arrange an appointment to file. Now, candidates can also file electronically or mail their affidavit of candidacy with the filing fee to the district office. And of course, this information is both in the packet, it's also on our website. Anita, is there anything else that you'd like to share as the person who is accepting those and working through that?
No, sir, you've covered it all.
Okay. So that we have four slots open and we will be running our filing period from August, or excuse me, from July 28th to August 11th, in basically what the Secretary of State's calendar says.
All right, excellent, thank you. And I do want to specifically thank Anita for her work on this and giving full consideration to how we're able to conduct this process in the midst of some restrictions as a result of the pandemic. So we appreciate your really good thoughts about how this can work and work well for anyone who is considering a run for school board. So I'll just pause for a moment if there are board members have any questions regarding the process we'll be using for filing for school board.
Have a question?
Yes, Rob?
Will there, when, for example, when people filed for city council, the city website had an updated list during the filing period of who had filed. Will there be a list so you can sort of see who has filed in, you know, from day to day during that period?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we've done that in the past, but there's no reason that we couldn't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd be happy, something we could easily put on the website, Rob. It's not a problem at all.
Okay.
Yes, actually, Rob, I think that's a great idea. Obviously, as someone does submit their candidacy as a matter of public record. And in the past, I know that the local media has always, has typically, in some years, contacted on a pretty consistent basis who has filed. But in the era of the pandemic and so much news out there, then I think it's a great place for the district to have that on the website. So thank you for that idea. Okay, last item for information is construction update number 29. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I will be brief here. I do want to share a couple, and I have a couple of pictures to show you that I think you'll like to see. So I do want to start out by saying we did have the first positive COVID-19 case for a subcontractor. I'm not going to get into the details of where it was at or that kind of thing. But what I want you to know is that we've told you before that Knutson Construction was uniquely situated to address this set of circumstances because of their long history of working at Mayo Clinic. Jim Colseth and myself received immediate phone calls from Knutson. They had a very clear plan. The protocols were implemented successfully. That particular site was shut down for one day. Knutson paid for someone to come in and do the disinfection. And then we continued the following day with a new crew from that different, from the affected subcontractor. So that is just, I mean, we're hopeful that these kinds of things are limited. You know, however, we know that we have had that first one and that the protocols that Knutson promised would be in place are in place. If you drive by Sibley lately, the parking lot surface was completed late last week. It's kind of interesting to see that. We know that ceilings are, the addition, the terrazzo in the cafeteria area, Area C, 95% complete. Only, they only have to polish yet. The ceilings are complete in the new addition. They're working on interior renovation. Drywall will be completed in the renovation portion next week. At the new Greenville Park, the air handling units serving the west half of the building were officially turned on on July 6th. And anybody who's been working on the building, especially last week, was happy that that was turned on. And they're currently getting ready through the startup procedures. And I'm going to share with you, the metal, the glass folding door in the media center was installed. So I'm going to share with you a photo. That's not the one that I'm going to show you here, but see here. Should be this one. Can you see, can you just give me, Rob, can you, I see on my screen, do you see the glass door there? On your screen? Let me stop my screen share and share it again. Just to make sure you can see it because it's pretty cool. Here we go. Now you should be able to see that. And so that is right outside the media center. So it will create a barrier so you can't get into the media center after hours, but you're able to see it. There's that small living room, if you will, right outside the soft seating. So I thought you'd appreciate seeing that photo of the glass wall going into the new Greenville Park Media Center. So pretty exciting in that particular part. And then finally, we have all of the underground work done with slabs being poured back at the Community Education Center. Drywall and other finishes are going to start next week. So a lot of really good things happening. One thing I want to update the board on, just to give you a heads up, is that we are still on track with budget. But we are, as any good contractor is, we in our project, last project oversight committee, and we'll be talking about this again tomorrow, what we have is an issue of where our contingency is being used, which is what contingency is there for. And we are foreseeing the possibility of needing to ask you to consider levying for some of our additional authority. And we're not saying it's going to happen, or I'm just wanting to make sure that you know that there's the possibility as we get into Longfellow, if there are contingency needs there, we may need to use some of our remaining authority. You recall that the bond was passed for around $41 million. And we were able to get such an advantage with the interest rate, if you recall, that we only needed to issue bonds for these projects of around $39 million. So we have $2 million more of bonding authority that the voters gave us the authority to do. However, we do not want to use all of that authority. So we're going to be talking to the project oversight committee tomorrow. And at our next construction update next month, I will give you another update. What we are looking at doing is if we have some specific pieces that would need to be done at Longfellow, we have the cash flow capability to pay for those things. And then we would be able to actually, as a board, you'd be able to authorize selling those additional bonds for the exact amount of how much we needed to spend above what we currently have authority for. So I want to be really clear, I'm not saying that we're going to need it. But if you remember, all the way back to when we approved the $39 million and selling $39 million worth of bonds, there were questions by board members on this video call about, would that be enough? And what would happen if we came close? And if you recall, I said, "We have not ceded that bonding authority." We would have the ability to come back later. I think this does two things. One, it would allow us to finish the projects in a way that we can all be proud of. Secondly, it's going to, we are not going to, it's very much going to be the case that we are not going to tax at the full authority that the voters gave to us. And with one of our core values being stewardship, that's a great story to share. So that is your construction update for July 13th.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments? Tom?
So I wonder, with interest rates even lower, could we refinance and get a better deal on any of our outstanding loans?
So, you know, we have an excellent relationship with Ellers Incorporated, who is our financial advisor. And you remember Joel Sutter, he's come to you before you many times. Joel is actually retiring at the, near the end of the summer. Jeff Sealy also from, and Barbie Doyle from Ellers. They are constantly watching that market and they are looking to see there's, it isn't just like, it's akin to refinancing your house. But if you recall, we have already refinanced our debt several times over the years. They will let us know when they think there's a financial advantage for us to do it. And they are looking at that on a fairly regular basis. We get an annual report from them to be sure. But I just had a conversation with Jeff Sealy a couple of weeks ago and we're not at that point yet because we've refinanced the debt so many times. But when we can, we will. I guarantee it. It's one of the things that Val lives for is refinancing debt.
Amy?
Yes, I have a question. So we're getting into our contingency funds. Are there any large expenses in particular that were unanticipated that's causing issues? Or is it just kind of a general, everything's costing a little bit more than expected?
Yeah, I'll give you one example that I can give you tonight. So there was an example of at Sibley Elementary where in the specking of the boiler there, it would, the initial boiler that was specked was not the exact same as all of the other boilers that we have in the district. And so far, I think it was $14,000. You know, we were able to get the same boiler across the system. That's really important because now we have to order less parts, we have to invest in less training for different kinds of maintenance, things like that. So that's one example of what we've been looking at in terms of some, it's, we haven't had anything, one really big thing. It's been more things like that, Amy. And what our measuring stick is, if this investment will give us operational return on investment, those are the things that we're prioritizing. So we chose not to do part of an existing parking lot adjoining, not doing an additional overlay because that's something we could do later. There wasn't necessarily a return on the investment for doing that right now. But something like that boiler that I mentioned, there's a return on that investment because efficiency, having people only have to have so many parts, be able to operate, any of our custodians who understand our boiler system, be able to work on any other boiler, that's the measuring stick that we've used.
Thank you.
Rob, questions or comments?
Nothing, thanks.
Ellen?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
And Noel?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, excellent. So that's our construction update. Thank you, Dr. Hillman, for that. So that concludes the agenda for tonight's meeting with the exception of future meetings. So those for the month of August were, are Monday, August 10th and Monday, August 24th, both at 7:00 PM. We will determine the format, i.e. location, of those board meetings as we get closer to the date. So everyone enjoy the next few weeks. We only have one board meeting in July. Appreciate everyone's work tonight and their patience that we worked through a number of issues and went a little bit longer. But it was an extremely productive meeting and lots of great questions and discussions. So much appreciated. And of course, we will look forward to a time when we can all be together again. And in the meantime, we will all take care and stay well. So with that- meantime, we will all take care and stay well. So, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second, Tom.
Second by Tom. We have a motion and a second. Anita, if you'll conduct a roll call vote for adjournment, please.
Bronniak?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Drapmon?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.